I'd like to call to order the August 20th, 2019 work session for the Mathacton School District Board of Directors. Please rise for the pledge.
(inaudible)
The public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. By way of announcements, an executive session report. There was an executive session of the board held this evening, August 20th, in a classroom here at Arrowhead for the purposes of discussing a matter of personnel regarding an administrative employee. By way of attendance, we have all board members present. Mr. Ryan will be joining us on the phone, I believe. In recognition of guests and scheduled speakers, Dr. Zerbi.
Thank you, Ms. President. This evening, we have a number of speakers. First off, I'd like to introduce Mr. Jim Beam from the Mathacton Education Foundation for a check presentation, and Nikki Krelovich, I mean. Nikki?
Thank you, Drs. Zerbi, school board directors. Jim Beam can't be with us tonight, so he'll have to settle for me. I'd like to present a check tonight to the Mathacton School District from the Mathacton Education Foundation. Thanks to our generous donors, we are thrilled to present the check tonight for two separate grant awards. The first award is for $5,045 to cover the registration fees for 12 Mathacton faculty members to attend the National ISTI Conference. In June, our teachers attended the STEM Conference in Philadelphia where they learned how to use technology to solve challenging problems in the classroom. Our faculty walked away with exciting new ideas to implement in their classrooms this fall. We are thrilled to be able to fund professional development for Mathacton teachers. We are also presenting an award funding the ukulele program under Mr. David Bickel at Skyview Elementary School. This $2,500 award will facilitate the use of musical instruments as a vehicle for music instruction, including but not limited to the science of acoustics, a blueprint for the engineering of musical instruments, the inclusion of geographic studies in various regions of the world that utilize string instruments, and applied musical theory. The ukulele is an excellent instrument for differentiated instruction, allowing students with muscular or learning challenges to participate in all activities. We are so lucky to have forward-thinking faculty members and administration like those who are here tonight and who are part of these grant awards, and we are thrilled to be able to support their innovation in education. Now, I would like to have the faculty members from ISTI, from Skyview, Mr. Bickel, and all of our Skyview students to join us for a check presentation. Photo.
(inaudible) So, we're gonna do adults in the back, kids in the front, okay?
those check presentations.
(inaudible)
Ms. Krelovich and Mr. Beam have provided some outstanding leadership for the Education
Can we hear some kids kneeling in front of the check?
Foundation. They certainly are doing a number of different things.
We got a lot of people in there. There we go.
Aside from presenting checks, they're also recognizing a lot of the contributors that
Is there anybody here? Are you like asleep?
over the years have made Mathacton such a great place to live and learn.
(laughter) (inaudible)
And this year, on October 10th, 2019, they'll be celebrating the Apex Awards, which is
(laughter) (applause)
a pinnacle of contributions that individuals and groups in the community have made to the Mathacton community and educational process. So, we truly appreciate the work that Mr. Beam and Ms. Krelovich are doing for the district, and we look forward to many other check presentations to come. Thank you so much. Also, on the agenda this evening are a number of things. I just want to explain them first before we move forward. We have concept drawings and next steps. We have Mike and Jamie from KCBA here this evening. You probably remember them from previous presentations, so we'll welcome them back. In addition, we're going to talk about new school construction and renovation financing Mr. Bricker presented in July to the finance committee, and he'll update the entire board on that matter here this evening. And last, number four, I'll head forward. As you know, back in July, we had a number of conversations about some outstanding information that still needed to be provided to the board. I want to just provide some of those answers, make sure that everybody understands, you know, what we've done and provided. Now, some of that information will be included in KCBA's presentation here this evening, so we'll just reference that as when we get to that part. So, without any further ado, Mike, the floor is yours. You're welcome.
Perfect. Thank you, guys, very much for having us back. As we talked last time, we talked a little bit about providing some additional answers to some of the questions that you guys had from the initial study. We covered that last time a bit at the high school, and tonight, we wanted to show some additional concepts for what new construction could look like and help kind of connect the dots and some information and some questions, as Dr. Zerbi had said, from our last presentation. So, tonight, we're gonna give kind of a quick update, and then we're gonna show three renovation or three options. The first two are renovations to the existing building, the third one being the new building. Additionally, after that, we're gonna talk about, one of the questions was, we're dealing with, obviously, the building issues here, as well as enrollment growth in this area. What else may be coming down the pipe? So, if we're looking at something that could potentially be at Worcestershire, we wanted to make sure that the board was aware of that and start to put some numbers together for a potential enlargement there. So, again, as a little bit of a recap in the process before, our team has gone through architectural analysis, as well as engineering analysis of the existing building, and we had a pretty lengthy discussion about the conditions that we saw here. The process as well, we went and met with every teacher in the school. We got a lot of great feedback from everybody. We toured three new elementary schools in the surrounding area, and since then, and since our last meeting with you at the high school on July 16th, we took a group to Slatington Elementary School, just north of Allentown, and walked them through a similar renovation building. This was an older building, built in the '70s, open pod. We converted that to classrooms. This was kind of the old entry to the school. This is the new one. So, there was a little bit of an addition, as well as some renovations, kind of a similar project as well, and so there was some great feedback of what that would look like. So, that has occurred since our meeting last month. Existing conditions, again, the summary, there was just a lot of things on the exterior of the building that need to be repaired and replaced, numerous interior issues, building systems that need to be upgraded, and then we just talked about the educational environments and security protocol updates. Obviously, 50 years has gone by, and a lot has changed, not only in how we deliver education, and certainly some of the safety protocols that we tend to see now in new school design. A couple of things that had been asked was, okay, well, how do we bridge the gap from some of the other studies that have occurred? So, this was an excerpt from a previous group that had looked at kind of an à la carte list of all of the things that were needed in the school. So, this was kind of individual things that if you wanted to go fix that or fix that, here's how much that could cost. And that was back in 2016. What we've seen since 2016 is quite a large increase in escalation, and I'm gonna talk in a minute about some of the issues with trying to itemize a number of things to fix in a larger school project. So, those are some of the excerpts from that study. We've pulled out some of those things in that study, as well as analysis that we had conducted as well, saying, you do need a new roof. We talked about the school needs all-new windows. We talked about the need for interior partitions to create enclosed classrooms. So, this was that à la carte list that we had created along with the study to say, here's all of these things that need to be fixed in this building. It's starting to sound almost like a new building anyway, and what else? So, this is a new slide where we're talking about the challenges of thinking things as an à la carte methodology. What it doesn't take into consideration, at a certain degree of renovation, you are needing to bring this building up to building codes. Last year, and this will make a lot of sense, last year, Pennsylvania updated our building codes to the 2015 International Building Code. Little silly, but that's how states work. Sometimes, they adopt older codes. But it brought us way up from 2009. So, what the current 2015 code requires is a lot of additional improvements in energy, energy codes, electricity consumptions, things like that. Again, all good things, but things that are gonna add more costs. We're gonna need more insulation to the roof of the building. We're gonna need daylighting controls in all of our lighting. All of that lighting needs to be LED lighting. So, there's things inherently that are costing more in a renovation, even apples to apples, from that à la carte list, just to bring you up to code three, which would be four years later, plus all of the escalation in costs from a $12 million à la carte list to a $14 million list that was given last year as part of Fidavia's list of things, of improvements. And as you'll see in a moment, our list of doing all of these things because of code compliance takes you up a little even further than 14 million. So, I think it's important to understand that if you wanted to fix the roof, go ahead. If you wanted to fix that light fixture over there, go ahead. But as soon as you take on a larger renovation project, something to the scope of Slatington, of taking all of these issues and correcting them, you are now entering into a larger requirement of the project. You need to come up to building codes, ADA compliance, and things like that. So, that's where it's a little bit harder to kind of bridge that, well, why was it 12, and now it's 14, and now it's higher? Any questions there? Because I know that's a little bit complicated to think about. So, the first option, and we're trying to keep this simple and narrow that to really just three, is taking all of the things from that facilities assessment list, all of the à la carte pieces, and the code compliant requirements for renovations, all of the things that Pennsylvania Building Code and Americans with Disabilities Act would require of you, as well as security protocols and things like that that we don't feel should be left unresolved. So, essentially, taking you to that Slatington level of fixing all of the things that need to be fixed physically, as well as security protocols. This is where we are looking at bright sizing the classrooms. We can't have open classrooms. You can't allow them to not have doors. So, when we, and the walls that you have there now are not rated. The ceiling structure would have to completely come out because we'd be putting in all-new electrical systems and a fire protection system. So, essentially, when we started fixing some of these things, all of the walls around the library space come down anyway. So, in putting those back, I don't know that we would want to put them back in triangular forms with shared spaces that the teachers aren't really using, so we would want to put them back in rectilinear form. So, there's a lot of things in here that would be fixed, classrooms, small group instruction rooms and hallways. We would start to try to create new spaces for those as well. So, you're trying to take those kind of existing floor plans of the diamond-shaped rooms and squaring those off a bit. In doing this, we're trying to meet all of the current building codes that we talked about, as well as safety practices for the existing building. So, here's the existing building, and we talked about an addition at the front, an admin addition to the front, and a sixth classroom addition to the back. So, this is trying to get us back to essentially what we have now. It would remove the modular trailers, so we would renovate the 52,000-square-foot existing building, remove the trailers, and build 12,000 square feet of space. So, this was the option, again, of kind of getting back to where we are now. So, that 12 million number, which was 14 last year, we're showing now closer to 18, about 17.7, with all of those things that would be required. And again, that includes design contingencies, bidding contingencies, understanding that this isn't being bid for at least another year, site work that wasn't considered in some of the previous studies and things like that. So, I think this is kind of an updated version of right sizing and correcting what you have now. So, that was option one. Option two, talking about taking those same issues, same code compliant issues, but now doing the educational capacity enlargement. We were talking about a 500-student school before, and now we're talking about 625-student school. We're talking about building a few more of those small group instruction spaces rather than allowing them to just kind of hang out in the hallways or be doubled up in some other spaces. And enlarging the gym. So, what that would do would be renovate this space completely for cafeteria and build a larger gym component. That was kind of now meeting the educational specifications that we were, had created as part of the study. So, that's what that looks like here. We're still building the admin space in the front, so we have a secure entry, admin directly connected to that, the gymnasium space, and then the larger classroom addition to the back. So, we jumped from 12,000 square feet to 32,000 square feet, a much larger addition, and in this case, in three locations around the school. So, that jumped that number from 17.7 up to close to 26 million for construction of that. So, that's, now we're building, as we said, 32,000 square feet instead of 12,000 square feet. What's missing in that are things like the exterior building envelope, basically the insulation and moisture protection that's within those walls. We would be patching the brick that's popping off the outside of the building, having, you know, put in new flashing and things like that on the bottom of the masonry walls outside that allows for moisture to get out, so there's a lot of exterior work. But that insulation cavity that was in the '70s is not what we would build today. So, you're, again, coming back wearing a spring jacket in the middle of winter because we're not able to, unless we took out the exterior walls, you're not really able to come back and put in a more properly insulated exterior. The building layout, as we said before, we're still gonna have a big circle around the library space. The dimensions of the classrooms aren't necessarily ideal. The addition, that big addition that we are showing, is further away from the core of the building. So, again, we're, it's all okay, but we're doing a lot, and we're not necessarily getting what we may be able to get in a new construction. So, that last comment there, you're spending 18 million or 26 million in renovations, but you're really constrained by the, a lot of the existing conditions and the structure of the existing building. That's above and beyond all the conversations we've had about phasing. How would you actually do this while you still had kids in the school? And we've talked last time about the disruptions of that. So, that's a little bit more information about the two renovation options. So, tonight, we wanted to show some of the options for the new building and kind of get into that more than just a little box that we were showing before. So, here's the property line. We talked about setbacks, which are areas that you need to stay away from your property line. To the west, we have the sloped area of the site that kind of goes down to that residential area. So, we had, again, identified the rear of the site as the best-case scenario for buildable area. We felt that we've got five and a half acres back here in blue, that that would be enough to develop for the new program. So, we kind of looked at this area here, really the back zone there, as the construction area, like what is that gonna look like during construction? We could have an area here for the contractors to park their cars, lay-down spaces, all the materials that come to build the new building. And so, that red line here is really kind of coming across this way and keeping the front of the school essentially the way it is now. We would just be building in the back. You'd have less green space back here. I mean, this baseball field and things would be compromised during construction, but we could still utilize the play area up here. We may still be able to utilize the playground space at the front of the school and really try to keep our safeties on our construction zone to the rear of the site. This still allows us to build what we're showing here as the school in the rear, the admin space, and then the community component to the new building. The challenge with, again, that addition to this building, the gym is in the back, and the cafeteria is over here. You don't really, all our community functions are kind of spread out a bit, and the new design and the new buildings, oftentimes, we try to allow the community components to be, the ability to be segregated and secured off from the rest of the school. So, as we kind of zoom in and start to look at the bubbles that we talked about last time, we talked about a possible two-story wing in the back of the building, and then a lot of those community components to the front, and we've further developed that since then, so I wanted to share that with you now. So, if this is the new built, or the existing school down here, this is kind of the rear of that property line. What we're showing here in these two spaces is a gymnasium, large stage, and a cafeteria space here. So, really, that community component of the school is situated right here, where you could still come through the front doors, still have access to toilets and exits and storage, but have all of these components that you may be utilizing throughout the days and nights and weekends for youth events to all be perfectly secured and regulated right at the front door. If we zoom in a little bit to the front here, you can see a large administration area. We have the ability for a locked vestibule at the front that brings visitors directly into the reception area. So, that's a big plus for security, again, something that we'd have to rebuild if we were doing it here. What we're showing up here is the ability to start with a bit of a kindergarten wing. Oftentimes, it's nice for those kids starting out, those first few years, to have, be a little bit closer to the front door. They're not traveling as far into the school as they, as the rest of the group. So, maybe what we were thinking here was the ability to have a bit of a kindergarten communal space, collaborative space for project-based learning for these five classrooms. And again, what this school is showing is the 625-student option, and have a bit of a kindergarten center almost as part of the larger piece of the larger school. So, this situated here, zooming in and trying to have a little bit of an open space for projects, and then the five individual classrooms located very near the front of the school. As I mentioned, the building would be on two floors, so if we go to the back here, we're showing a first-grade wing with several different areas for learning support as well, a lot of the special education program that was in the building. One of the things that we kind of liked about this layout of having five classrooms, five classrooms equals 125 kids, that was about the enrollment that we were looking at per grade, was to be able to have some communal spaces within them as well. A lot of the schools that we had visited, they either had big, massive rooms adjacent to a lot of the classrooms, or huge extra hallway space for all this learning outside the classroom, which all seemed very nice, but also kind of makes the building bigger, which is gonna make the cost more. So, we felt that we could keep in the spirit of that by having some small group spaces shared directly near the five clusters per grade, but also in some areas, kind of pop out the corridors just a little bit so that we create some abilities for teachers to bring students out of the classroom, work in small groups in those types of areas. At the end of the main access hallway here, an area for STEM education that could be very big and very open. This is a space where, again, we hear time and time that teachers have all of these great programs. You talked about the check that was just received and all these great ideas about STEM education, but they're in a classroom that's small, and they only have so much storage, and they have to teach every subject all in one room. Well, when they have the ability to have these types of STEM center spaces, communal spaces in the heart of the school, these are areas that we see as great investments towards project-based learning. So, this would be an attribute, a kind of the T-intersection of that school, where all students would be able to pass it on their way to classes and certainly integrate with that throughout the day. So, you've got on the right-hand side of the school, the first grade on the first floor was over here, second grade is over on this side, again, in kind of an SGI space around the cluster of classrooms, and we're taking all of these special education needs and placing them throughout the ebb and flow of the school. So, we don't have just a wing where that is occurring. It's really kind of integrated throughout the core of the school. The library and the two music rooms, kind of right on Main Street, heading from the front door up to that collaborative space. The second-floor area is really basically just a bar, and what we're doing there is duplicating the classrooms from the first floor. So, we had first and second on the first floor, third and fourth grade on the second floor. Art is located above music, and we have the ability here then for that collaborative space to be a two-story space for that STEM space at the middle there with a communicating stair that would bring students down. On the right-hand side here, we're showing third grade, on the left-hand side, fourth grade, but again, these rooms would be very similar. And this SGI space here in the middle where we kind of pull this open, you know, there's an opportunity here, maybe because these kids are a little older, where this SGI space could be an operable wall that could be opened up, and now we've got an even larger space now that can spill out into the corridors for these five classrooms. So, what we're trying to do in modern school design is creating those typical enclosed spaces, but understanding that no space is ever big enough, providing the ability for these teachers, whether it's this group to spill out, or these two groups to spill out together, or grade-wide spill out together into communal space for outside of the classroom learning, and then also have that other grand space in the school for STEM research. Those are the types of spaces we're seeing, and that allows us to have one or two spaces that everybody shares versus taking every classroom and making it larger and larger and larger. The site plan here kind of shows the building in the back with the existing building removed, bus loop and parent loop, as we talked about before. So, we're solving a lot of those site issues, the vehicular traffic concerns that we had before about everybody coming in one zone, not really knowing if I'm going left or right, and, you know, parents going into bus lanes when they're trying to keep them separated. Here, we're utilizing the two existing curb cuts, but we're bringing in buses just here and back out, and we're bringing just cars in and back out. Lot of ample space for green space. A lot of the fields are being maintained. So, when we go through these numbers and we look at, we're building about 84,000 square feet new, we end up at about $28 million for the building construction costs. And again, you're seeing building costs, site costs, the demo of the old building, as well as contingencies. So, we're always piling on contingencies to make sure that, we're being very, very conservative at this stage with our cost estimate numbers. So, a breakdown of all of those options side by side and issue by issue. You can see in option one and two, again, we're looking at renovation costs. Option two has a bigger construction cost because we're building new. Option three obviously doesn't have any renovation cost because there's nothing left to renovate, but the construction cost is higher. But what we see between the two options that are really kind of the target towards the educational program, those differences aren't that different anymore. Again, referring back to that à la carte list of the roof, the windows, the doors, the walls, the sprinkler system, we're building, all of those things are also in the new building, but it's a new building, and we have the ability to arrange that any which way we'd like to. So, really, construction-wise, you're looking at about a $2 million difference between the two. But then, what's interesting, when you come down to construction contingency, we always throw more money at a renovation cost because there's gonna be a lot more unforeseen conditions, things that may creep up that we didn't know about as we start to tear apart a 50-year-old building. Well, we wouldn't have as many of those, certainly, in a new building, so that construction contingency is reduced, so your total project costs are even a little bit closer to each other between the two options there. And this was a slide that I believe we had shared with everybody kind of before about the educational compromises, the ability or inability in the renovations to deal with the bus loops and parents loops. Certainly, the disruptions of the two renovation schemes is gonna be much greater than the new construction piece. And then schedule as well. Renovation is just gonna take a little longer because we're gonna be, we'll only be able to do those things in smaller chunks, where in a new construction, we can be in the back, build the building, the kids are in, everything's done, and then we just worry about taking this building down and dealing with the site area. So, questions there? Next steps that we had talked about before was- educational program, those differences aren't that different anymore. Again, referring back to that à la carte list of the roof, the windows, the doors, the walls, the sprinkler system, we're building, all of those things are also in the new building, but it's a new building and we have the ability to arrange that any which way we'd like to. So really, construction-wise, you're looking at about a $2 million difference between the two. But then what's interesting, when you come down to construction contingency, we always throw more money at a renovation cost because there's going to be a lot more unforeseen conditions, things that may creep up that we didn't know about as we start to tear apart a 50-year-old building. Well, we wouldn't have as many of those certainly in a new building, so that construction contingency is reduced. So your total project costs are even a little bit closer to each other between the two options there. And this was a slide that I believe we had shared with everybody kind of before about the educational compromises, the ability or inability in the renovations to deal with the bus loops and parents loops. Certainly, the disruptions of the two renovation schemes is going to be much greater than the new construction piece. And then schedule as well. Renovation is just going to take, take a little longer because we're going to be, we'll only be able to do those things in smaller chunks, where in a new construction, we can be in the back, build the building, the kids are in, everything's done, and then we just worry about taking this building down and dealing with the site area. So, questions there? Next steps that we had talked about before was getting to tonight. But the next steps again would be considering moving forward. I think at this stage, moving forward with a project would be able to get the building, the new building open in August of '22. So there's still three years to go until we're there. We would start with schematic design that would start next month and go into the fall, come back again with more developed drawings, more developed renderings, more developed cost analysis, begin the land development coordination. That can take an entire year to deal with building approvals, site approvals, DEP, environmental protection approvals, and things like that. So the next steps, I believe a few guys are looking to move forward. I know there's a motion to vote potentially next meeting. That would get everything started. That first phase, again, schematic design, and we would come back in November with a board update of the project at that time. Do you want me to keep going, or other questions at this point? Keep going. So again, we talked a little bit about a schedule of what the next year would look like. Schematic design, design development is developing that design, and then construction drawings is putting together the drawings for bidding. The purpose of this slide was to kind of talk about the amount of collaboration and efforts that go on. As we said before, for the study, we met with every teacher. We would do that again. Do that again in two different stages of this academic year as we're getting ready for, in the continual development of the design of the building. The layout that we showed today, we had shared with a couple of the elementary school principals, but that needs to be vetted with you, that needs to be vetted further with, with the teachers. That's kind of the start that we would work from there. So there's still a lot of input from the board, a lot of opportunities for reviews, and certainly checking on, making sure we're staying on budget. The last part of the agenda that we talked about tonight was, was a quick look at Worcester as far as an addition there. If there's a desire to expand that building as many as four classrooms, so that would increase the capacity there at 100 students. You have Arrowhead here, Worcester up here, that's obviously an area of the district that's further away from the rest of your school buildings here. We talked last time about the catchment area for Arrowhead and the amount of development that's going on there, but the amount of development that's going up in the Worcester area as well. So there's equal concern there about enrollment projections. This was taken from your previous study, looking at Arrowhead starting to pop in the next year or so, but showing how Worcester was already starting to pop, pop in population in the next coming years and certainly growing even larger projected out further. So we looked at, okay, if we have an existing building, where exactly would that sit? There's a couple of areas, either in the corner here or even at the front, where an addition could be set. We just looked at numbers. If we, one of the things that we'd like to be addressed in that area as well, we do have a separate vestibule from the entrance area of admin, so we thought, well, if we're doing this, let's fix that as well. So let's look at a little bit of a renovation of the existing interior so that admin space would be renovated, possibly moved or rebuilt, and then we would build classrooms where admin is now. 5,000-square-foot addition, I think, is a little big, but again, we're trying to be big to start. Site work associated with the new construction, bidding contingency, again, that kind of same idea, so you're about $2.5 million for an addition on the Worcester contingency, soft costs, an allowance for furniture for building four classrooms, we got to go buy 100 new chairs. So there's, again, an allowance there that can be adjusted, but you're looking around $3.5 million total project for an enlargement of that building. Again, probably more than we need there, but we're trying to be conservative and just look several next steps out. If you're looking to make the investment in a new building or a large renovation project here, you got to know what else may be coming down the line to deal with all of your enrollment growth. So that is it. Now you have to ask questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. So, so this evening, I guess, I leave it open to the board to ask any questions about the presentation. There's a number of matters here that I'll just, if I could just share that, maybe it might actually take some questions off the table so that I could share a couple of things. And it's actually taking us down to the under-guested scheduled speakers under number four. So there were, there were a number of questions that were asked by the board, and then those questions included references from KCBA on building and renovating on existing sites. There was an email provided to the board that included three, four, four references, one from Darrington, one from Northampton, and one from Southern Lehigh School District with regards to that particular request. I won't go into any of the other specifics, but the board has that information. In addition to that, the question was what renovations, maintenance will be required, meaning must do, over the next three years during the time that we are building a new Arrowhead or renovating a new Arrowhead? And so the, the response there is that if a renovation is determined, is a determined outcome, then the scope of the renovation itself will dictate what, if any, maintenance in particular will be done that's described in the facility's assessment plan. So depending on the, on the scope of that work, on the sequencing of that work, the, any maintenance by our team or any other third-party vendors would be, would result from, from that determination. If the, if new construction is determined outcome, the maintenance work needed will be handled within the general operating budget of, of the district. So in review of that, both with KCBA, with the Fidavia Construction Management Firm and our in-house facilities folks, we believe that the maintenance of the existing structure in lieu of making, you know, major renovations and maintenance to the building while a new building is being constructed, we should be able to handle that within the operating budget. The next question was site visits for renovation. I believe, Mike, you went over that. That was a visit to Sladington Elementary School, so a number of us from the original building tour team did a visit to Sladington, and they were kind enough to share us the matters associated with that construction process. The next question was what matters can potentially get funded under the foundation or other donations? While any aspect of the construction can be supported by private donations, schools typically see donations for specific, special areas like STEM or maker spaces along with cafeteria or gymnasium sponsors. It's been my experience that high schools see larger donations to specific science or business education classrooms from individuals or companies associated with those industries. So the Education Foundation could be a potential source of support in a number of programmatic avenues and student-focused ways, but I'm certain that their energy and effort towards Arrowhead should be, should not detract from their extraordinary work that they've done so far across the entire district. But I haven't spoken directly with them, and I can if the board so believes that I should. Furthermore, it's, if it's the will of the board, I can begin planning for a capital campaign effort. I have some experience doing that and certainly have some success doing that. I would recommend, if, if the board so chooses, that as an example, we focus on things like the community center or the gymnasium or spaces that we can get a number of different individuals and group, community groups behind to help support the use of these facilities, not only by our students during the school day, but certainly by youth groups and by senior groups in the evenings and weekends. The next question was presentation of a desk schedule. Mr. Bricker, Director of Business Services, will be presenting that this evening. The next question was a number of postcards sent. That number, and that was in reference to providing notice of the survey that was conducted in the public, and the number of postcards is 13,121. The next question was need to gather greater detail on the renovation options. I believe that the meetings between KCBA and Fidavia resulted in, in a better articulation of the, the menu of items that are, that are before us, specifically those included in the facility's assessment study and the additional items that are required to meet code with such, with such a renovation. There's, the question was need to determine the ability to utilize Worcester and Eagleville Prince to save money. In speaking with KCBA and Fidavia, the general thought would, would be to save money by limiting the cost associated with the design fees, et cetera, usually soft cost. However, the newest, the newest of the two buildings, Eagleville, was designed based on code and materials used nearly 15 years ago, and actually more. But the challenge would be to have the architects go through the entire set of drawings and making adjustments to fit for today's requirements. This could actually be a more costly soft cost than designing something from scratch. The next question was to revisit projects and look at the timing of projects, and does the renovation or new construction address all the enrollment projection matters or just those in Arrowhead? So part of the, the reason we shared the last couple of slides, and it certainly wasn't part of KCBA's original scope of work, some of that information was, was from their original slides and some of it was from a presentation that I provided back in January of 2019. The enrollment projections and concern contained in the presentation from January 2019, given the current school and grade configurations, says yes, that by the school year 2022, '23, Worcester is likely to be over the 90% utilization buffer. So, so basically, there is a, there's a, there's a utilization capacity in every building, and 90% of that is the, we'll call it the critical target warning for, for reaching that, that need. And Arrowhead would be over 90%, would be in the 90% buffer zone. So we'd have two schools related to that slide that by that school year would, would have some, some challenges. The concerns were discussed several times in other, in other meetings of the board with regards to our focus on, on the larger project, Arrowhead. And it is, is clear that while we're, we've been mainly focused on that, taking a broader look at what our challenges are across the district is helpful in making, you know, the best long-term decisions in, in all of this. So I believe the, the data provided by KCBA gives us an idea of a potential three to potentially $4 million investment if we were to meet the project, the enrollment projections as so slated in our last enrollment projection update. So certainly, the timing of all of this needs to be evaluated to a greater extent so that, A, we, you know, depending on the decision for renovation or new construction at Arrowhead, we need to, you know, certainly get on to our timeline with this particular project, how, if the projections unfold as they are predicted, how we would address that. And, and just in general, a number of ways that that could be done is through the use of, you know, modular classrooms as we see the growth, you know, escalating, and also when we, when we start noticing that, we'll likely need to be in the planning phases. So likely with the design phase of a four-building renovation, it comes, goes a little faster than a three-year process for a new, a full-size building, but nonetheless, there's still a lot of planning that, that's required in that. And likely by the time you make a decision a year from now on whether or not you're going to build or renovate based on, on if that's the path we go down in getting those quotes, or those bid specifications and, and the results from the bids, we'd likely be also finding ourselves considering, you know, what we're going to be doing with the Worcester Elementary School as well. The next question on, on this is questions reviewed by the community survey. So Ms. Amanda Kelly, our Coordinator of Community Information, will be posting all of the responses to the community survey on the Arrowhead Forward website, and that should be done by no later than the end of this week. So that ends the questions that I was provided back in July. You have the information for, from Mr. Kelly from KCBA. I would like to open up the question for questions from the members of the board. And remember, we have Mr. Ryan on the phone here. So to my right, is there any questions from members of the board? Mr. Winters?
Thank you. Just a couple of quick questions. On page 53, you compare the options financially. The soft costs are $4.2 million on option one and 2.6, 2.7 on option, I'm sorry. Option three was 4.2 and option one was 2.7 million dollars. What typi, I understand there's your fees, I get that. What typically would a township charge, or what is usually the relationship with the permits and the costs associated with those?
Well, a lot of times in soft costs, and again, today, we're going to include the typical cost for building permits. Hopefully, and without any elected officials in the room, that's something that can often be waived, land development fees. But they, you are building a building in their municipality, you need to put together, a lot of times the building permits are, you know, $10 a square foot because you're looking at somebody's building a porch addition. The building permit fees for something of this project could be hundreds of thousands of dollars. So sometimes those things can be waived with, with nice agreements with the municipalities. Typically, what they want to do is be able to cover the costs of the inspections. That is pretty typical, that, that the school district or the owner in this case would be covering the cost of inspections. But oftentimes with, you know, understanding that your money is their money because it's all coming from taxpayer money, there's oftentimes good agreements to try to reduce the, the cost of those things. But right now, we keep those costs in there for soft costs because we don't know that that has been agreed to.
Is there any specific definitions of those costs with lower probablities at this point in time for Worcester? I'm going to get to the other one.
Yeah, we could, we could go and try to look that up and, and put that together as far as what the, the cost of renovations portion of a building permit would be. New additions are going to be additional fees and then certainly new construction fees. We could look that up and, and start to try to put something together of what we think that could be. That would start to form the argument of, you know, hey, can we, can we reduce the fees that are being given to the municipalities and just pay for the inspections which are required anyway?
So just, what was your assumption for this presentation then?
For the soft, the soft cost numbers are percentages. So that number equates to 15%. 15% is pretty standard. That's going to include abatement costs of the existing building, asbestos analysis, fees, permits, our fees, printing costs, traveling, all that kind of other things. In typical projects, it's about 15%. So those numbers are just a straight relationship off the construction total.
Okay. And, and if I go to page 62 related to Worcester Elementary, you use 20%. You say usually the fees are more because it's a, an addition as opposed to a new construction?
Yeah, here, again, we're doing a lot less. So the, the percentages would be more so that the monetary number is a little
Is there a reason?
More correct. When, when you have a smaller job, it's, you start to lose the economy of scale of, of cost. So you're going, there's going to be flat fees of things that is a minute percentage in a $28 million project, but ends up being a higher percentage in a, to say, a small $2 million project.
Is that the same principle for the, the square footage at $300 versus?
Yes. And again, especially if we're, we're kind of filling in the nook and cranny in the front of the building, we wanted to throw a higher number on that, just to be safe.
So the, the last question I have related to Worcester, or the last question actually, the last question related to Worcester, you mentioned before about the 2015 international permit requirements that Pennsylvania has recently passed that opens up wider requirements for rehab. Do we open those elements up with Worcester with this addition on the remaining building, or is it only the new addition needs to have these requirements?
That's an excellent question. I think the proportion of that addition there being as small as it would be, we would limit that to a, a small, again, I'm saying small and I'm acknowledging it's $2.5 million, but proportionally to the rest of the building, it's a small percentage of the rest of the building. So the new building would have to, the new addition would have to meet those codes. If we can add that to the existing building and keep everything open, great. If that triggers the fact that we're now too big, that addition may have to be fire-rated and completely, that's by itself in a fire rating, meaning we can, it can be up against the building, we can have doors that lead from one addition to another, but it may have to be fire-separated from the existing school so that we don't have to go and, and modify the rest of the building. Because in Because in this scope, we wouldn't be touching the rest of the building. We're showing a small 2,000-square-foot renovation, not a 52,000-square-foot renovation.
Okay, that was my assumption. The assumption is we do not have to expand our improvements on Worcester. It's just the addition for more or less. And this 5,000 square feet is equivalent to six classrooms? Is that what the...
The addition would be for four classrooms. The enrollment number is 100. We kept that at 5,000 as well because we'd have to do... We're doing this at Westchester right now where we're adding four classrooms on the school. That threw them over the... Or I should say, threw them under the amount of toilets that they have in the building per code. So to build those four classrooms, we also had to add some toilet rooms because they didn't have enough toilets in the building by code for that added 100 students. So again, that'd be another analysis that would have to occur here. And that's why four classrooms at 800 square feet, we're saying is a 5,000-square-foot addition so that those classrooms could be a little bigger if we desire or if we may have to add a few toilets to that to bring that count up.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions to my right? Mr. Navarro?
Thanks. Thanks, Mike. Can you talk about what you saw at Sladington? That was your job, though, right? All right, so maybe you're a little biased. But what were the challenges then, at least that you saw there in doing that job? How old was that building?
10 years now.
It was done 10 years ago, you mean?
Yeah.
How old was the building when you did it?
It was in the early 70s. It won a Design Award for Integrative Thinking of Education because open classrooms sounded like such a great concept. It was an existing open pod school. They had sheets for walls, so they were a little bit behind you guys. And we had modulators on the site already. And their district offices were actually in that school building. So there was a lot of security overlaps, a lot of issues with that as well. Their site was very small and very sloped. They didn't have any additional land in their district to build new. And they had done a little bit of renovation on their existing heating and air conditioning systems. So again, same kind of analysis. There really wasn't a good spot for a new building. They looked at some sites but didn't want to do that. So the choice there was to renovate. Now, that was 10 years ago, was 18 million, so that's probably in the low 20s today. Two big additions, one was a new district office, that two-story piece in the front is all offices, and then a classroom addition to the side. So what we did is built the two additions first. They had district storage in the basement of that building. We actually went in, took all the storage out, created four temporary classrooms in there. So when the addition was done and the DAO was out and we had these temporary classrooms in the basement, windowless, but we built them anyway because that was less expensive than modulators. Then we started rotating the pods. We started with one pod, then went upstairs and did another pod, another pod. So again, it took a while because we had to do it in pieces. So it was about two and a half years, close to three, from start to finish for that project. Again, it's nice. There were areas of the school that we had to fill in, windows that we had to create. There, we actually spray-foamed insulation, the inside of the building. So we took the interior walls of the school and offset them in eight inches and created essentially a new exterior envelope to the school. So you had the original walls, here's the outside, and we made it thicker on the inside. That's expensive. You can do that, but that was really expensive. So again, we're proud of that result. It looks really, really nice. It met all of their needs. But that was a costly renovation project.
Next thing, I want to thank you for the work with Fidavia to go back through, look at the code requirements, where we need to be in this building to get the most accurate number possible for what a renovation would be. My last question. I had some questions on the conceptual stuff, but I don't think it's important in the context of what we're talking about here tonight. Paul asked some of my questions about the cost. So yeah, I have nothing else to say.
The idea, the concept is that a school building would fit there. If it looks completely different a year from now, great. But we know that we can safely build a building in the rear of the site. And the advantages to that then, being a little bit further in the back, is that we can essentially recreate or solve all of the problems by recreating some better site circulation in the front of that site.
The one question I did have about that was, the way that the drawing is, we're pretty much right up against that, was it 20-foot setback on the north side? What challenges does that create from a maintenance and operational standpoint going forward? Being 20 feet's not a lot of space.
No, I think we're a little bit further than that. But even if we're 40 feet to the property line, that's a little tight. It'd be nice to be bigger. You're really not going to be doing anything in the back of the school, but you don't have to be. All the offerings for a courtyard space or outdoor learning space or play spaces out in the front of the school, which is kind of for security reasons where you would like it to be anyway, you'd kind of want everything out in front of you. If we had a little bit more space, that'd be nice. And again, we can manipulate where that building sits, the shape of it, and how that fits 100 more times.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
If I could just add, I was on that trip to Sladington and I remember, Mike, you sharing with me that the community had... And the board had considered the building of a new school. But certainly, the community had a large investment in the design of the existing building. A lot of people have gone through that school and wanted that school to stay intact. So there was an emotional... A couple, other than not having a lot of land, there was an emotional tie to that. A lot of the slate on the floors were from the local community. So there's a lot of history associated with that. And I think that's some of the things that you shared with me. But can you just, if you wouldn't mind, share what was the difference between their conversation in renovation cost versus the potential new construction cost back in that time? Do you recall?
I don't recall. I don't know that the new building option, again, for them, was a little quickly, more quickly dismissed for a lot of reasons. But I think even back then, the cost that they did versus what new could be was very, very similar. They just, like we said, they didn't have the land. There was some emotional attachment to that site. They... I don't want to say that out loud, but they may have spent a very similar amount to build a new building to renovate. I know that the goal and desire was, if we're going to spend this money, it better look like a new building when we're done. And it very much does. And there were things, compromises with layouts and stuff like that. And again, it's a nice example. But I think they had some other issues that they weren't able to overcome to do a new building. And I think they had some inherent positives in that building that made it a little bit easier to renovate. We were able to section off floor by floor. It's a two-story building. Where here, we're either doing the pods or we're not. Or we're going to take out a whole wing or a whole hallway. The challenges of segregating the renovation in this existing building would be a little tougher than what we were doing there.
Do they have trapezoidal classrooms in that building?
No, everything was square, but it was, again, bed sheets between the two. They had parts of the building that kind of got caved in for, again, for kind of shared storage spaces at the exterior. So we actually filled those in. So there's areas of the building where we built a lot of new windows, poked new holes, but had to build floors to kind of patch in the kind of Swiss cheese that they had on the outside. But again, the desire was, we know we're spending basically that money. This better feel like a new building when we are done. It's nice. And again, I think it worked well for them. It's not, there's not one solution for everybody. I don't know that here, the additions and the improvements that we would do here for if it's 26 versus 28 or what those numbers were there, there's a lot more opportunity to do something very, very special for the community for a very long time in building new.
Thank you. Any other questions from members to my right? Mr. Enshel?
Thank you. First question relates to... This might be a question for Dr. Zurg, Mr. Brett. Slide seven through 11, layout of quite a few issues with this building. So my question is, one, are there any immediate concerns that need to be addressed? And over the course of the next, I think it was 21 to 33 months, depending on which option is done, under the proposals, are there any repairs and how much would need to be spent over that time span until whatever option is decided is complete?
Yeah, I tried to articulate that earlier as I was talking about the questions associated with, from the July meeting. So the question was, what renovations maintenance will be required, I mean, must do over the next three years during the time that we are building a new Arrowhead or renovating an Arrowhead? And generally speaking, we said if a renovation is to be determined outcome, then the scope of the renovation will dictate what, if any, maintenance will be done by the district or by third parties. Basically, on the sequencing and the scope of the renovation will dictate what we do. So if they're going to, for example, start on the roof, we're not going to be doing any roof patching. So it's kind of complicated. We'd have to wait till that plan is defined and then we would then determine whether or not there's anything of major that we need to address. If new construction is the determined outcome, the maintenance work, we believe we can maintain as we have been for the last umpteen years within the facility's budget, knowing that a new school is just around the corner. A lot of the things that are associated with the facility's assessment plan are articulated that these are the things over this period of time that need to get done and that should get done if, in fact, you're not going to do a renovation or new construction.
So the new construction scenario you're saying is zero? And the renovation is embedded in the numbers we're seeing in the presentation?
No. The numbers are outside of the renovation schedule and dollar amounts shown. If it takes us three years to do a renovation in the district, I'm not certain if... I'm not certain what items will come up that we need to address. And similar to the new construction as well. So but based on what's in the facility's assessment, we know that we can likely maintain the building while the new construction is in process.
Right. So the new construction is zero, so the renovation would have to be zero or embedded in those numbers? Otherwise, the numbers he's presenting are understated.
Understood. Fair statement.
Okay. I was trying to get to the cost numbers there. All right. Next question relates to page 38. So the proposed new layout has five classrooms per grade. But my understanding is that currently, there are four classrooms per grade in this building today. And the enrollment projections don't, over the next, I think through 2027, don't indicate any need for that type of, that size of a building. Trying to reconcile those two.
Well, the first is the full-day kindergarten. So right now, we only have two kindergarten classrooms in this building servicing potentially 100 kids. So technically, to go to full-day kindergarten, you instantly need two more classrooms. So that would take you from... That gets every grade K to four at four classrooms per grade. So that's step one, is the choice of full-day kindergarten. The second part of that is the added enrollment. That goes back to the... I forget which way it is. I guess it's down here. The added enrollment that is being projected for this area. So if we feel that the enrollment of this school would go above... Where are we? You know, here, we're getting close to that 500 mark. And again, we want to try to be... Our capacity wants to be about 85% of the number that you're targeting. So if we think that enrollment is growing and if we're building that building for 625, we can accommodate all of those students. If we build them for 500 and you think you may have 480, now you're looking at 24 kids in every classroom. If that bubble year comes through, now you're popping a bit. So the ability to keep class sizes down, if you had five classrooms per grade with that projected enrollment...
But that 101% out in 2027 assumes a functional capacity of 468. You're proposing a much larger building than we have today. So what's that new functional capacity number?
It's 85% of 625. 85% of 625. 625. Nobody got it? 531. So if you look at 473 divided by 525, so you'd be looking at a class size there of about 18 to 20 versus a class size of 23 to 25. We talked about building...
So five classrooms per grade assumes full-day kindergarten?
Yes.
And 473 in 2027?
Sorry, what was that last one?
473 students in 2027. Okay, all right. While we're on this slide, Dr. Zurg, are there any concerns today that Worcester and Woodland are at 94% utilization as of, it was October last year? I mean, did anything impact with the last school year? Were there any concerns at operating at those levels? Granted, it's a warning sign, but the reality was, we were above 90. Were there any concerns at operating at that level?
Well, certainly, there's concerns. The challenges that occur is the limited flexibility you have in doing a number of things that you would typically do within the instructional day. It didn't necessarily inhibit us from delivering our program, but it did limit our flexibility. So being able to move students and join classes and have all the grades in the same area of each building certainly makes it challenging because we're utilizing some of the space that were once used by other services, such as special education services and so forth.
But it worked. You were able to get it done.
We made it work, that's correct. Because we obviously had a successful school year last year.
Reason I ask that question, I'll try to get it in my head, whether 85 is the number, 90 is the number, or what should we be looking at? I understand that...
Yeah, I think these numbers, and I believe that Mike had shared back in his early presentation why there is a, under PlanCon, why there is a threshold. And Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the PlanCon uses the 85% threshold when looking at construction of schools and the enrollment associated. In my presentation, we used 85 as an approaching number. And obviously, the red is the 90%. So it was just a way to give the board and the community an understanding of where we are. We certainly, and I can say that part of some of the concerns even years ago with the operation of our schools prior to the construction of Skyview, there were classes that were run out in the hallways, in different closets. And we certainly have students out in the hallways in some of our buildings now getting some additional services. And generally speaking, we, as teachers and educators, do what we need to do to get the job done for our students. The thing that we're sharing with you here is, based on the PlanCon construction numbers and the best practices associated with it, it would be more suitable to have space to provide private one-on-one tutoring for students in need or for small group instruction. So it's not a matter of can we get it done? It's a matter of getting it done in a way that's most appropriate and that services the students in an educational-appropriate manner. So I'm not sure if you want to speak to the PlanCon matter at all, but I think that's pretty accurate.
Yeah, again, there's an understanding that it's not always a perfect 22 kids every year, every, every year. But they want to make sure... PlanCon's there to make sure that you don't under-build and make sure that you don't over-build. They want to make sure that when you're looking at your capacity, you pull that back a little bit so that a bubble year comes in, you don't have to suddenly throw modulators on the building or start building every time enrollment starts to grow a little bit. And to your point as well, you're providing much more adequate spaces for special education, small group instruction, that in a safer and much more appropriate environment for those students to learn than having them on the table. students to learn than having them on the table in the hallway next to a photocopier outside of the bathroom. And that's some of the environments that you're dealing with here.
So we've added to this presentation the need to address the Worcester issue, which I think is appropriate. Have we done anything or are we planning to do anything to address that second row on that slide? Our COLA utilization at below 60%?
What we, we certainly didn't engage KCBA as, in the conversation of that. We certainly educated them on what these, these numbers are. We certainly have had discussions within, within the board here. There were some recommendations about moving storage and things of that nature to some of those open spaces. We certainly, you know, had conversations about whether or not grade four should be moved from the elementary schools to Skyview, and that grade six from Skyview should be moved into our COLA to maximize the space. That was a conversation, certainly not a recommendation, but it was so determined sometime in about January of 2019 or February of 2019 that the board chose to move forward with keeping Arrowhead as a school, which would suggest that the board is inclined to keep the school and grade configurations as they currently are.
Another thing we've not really talked about, but I ask the board to keep this in mind when we get to item, the item on the agenda for the high school storage building, are those high school numbers at 75% dropping to 70. When we start thinking about storage, I think that's, that's got to be a factor there. My next question relates to slide 52, the cost for the new school option. I believe the prior presentation, this number was 35.6 million?
Yes, I did add an asterisk on the bottom. The building size, I think we used in June was 86,000 square feet. That was us taking the program and just multiplying it by 1.65, which is a grossing factor. So that's the mechanical rooms and toilet rooms and all those other things, based on a list of rooms. So what we did here is actually laid out the building. So the building that we showed tonight is about 84,000 square feet. So we were able to, to show that we built maybe a little bit more efficient building than, than the kind of prototypical grossing factor. So we brought the total square footage of the building down a little bit to meet the floor plan that we, that we shared with you tonight.
Okay. And then in light of today's economy and other construction activities going on, how comfortable are you with that number that it won't be 40?
The 270? Yeah, the schools, and we showed us the slide before, the schools that we built this year were between 245 and 265. So again, without, this past year, 2018, was a massive bump in construction costs. Steel, aluminum prices and things like that just went through the roof. So if we were standing here two years ago, that number might be 235. So it went up significantly. But even if we're showing 270, figuring that we're bidding this next year, even a year from now, so we're trying to build in some of that escalation into that number and then also hold an additional 3% in case of additional escalation. At least for the bidding cycle that's coming up this coming year, there's, I think we saw a study someplace that in Eastern Pennsylvania, 23 new schools were started construction this year alone, which is insane, that's a lot. And we anticipate that number to be pretty close this coming year. You guys would bid the following year. There's no indication that it wouldn't be, again, another robust year to, to build. So we're comfortable with that, that 270 number. We're showing 18% for site costs. Site costs are one of the things that continue to rise, so we wanted to make sure that we were increasing that number as well. But that's, again, the three projects we showed, I think we had one at 13%, one at 15, and one at 18% for site costs. So we chose to use the highest number there, again, just to make sure that we were being extra conservative in these numbers.
Okay. That was it. Thank you.
If it's okay with the board, I'd like to ask Mr. Ryan, who's on the phone here. Mr. Ryan, do you want to, do you have questions?
Most of my questions have already been asked and answered. I did want to make one comment based off of the capacity of the 625 they were talking about for the new school construction. Apologize. The, that number is basically, I think this is a rough point in the south, that it's basically, you know, five classrooms for five grades, which gets you your 25 classrooms, 25 classrooms times 25 kids per classroom, gets you the 625. I do want to point out, though, that based off of our current class size policy that we have, that 625 number is actually overstated. You lose about 45 students from that, which would make the max capacity of that school 580 kids. So the main reason I'm pointing that out is that we had talked that, you know, if you're, if you plan for building at 625, and then we decided later that we want to pull it back a little bit, because that number is overstated, that reduces our ability to pull back in the future. Is that a fair statement?
I think I caught part of that. He's right in the fact that we're judging that on 25 kids per class because that's the PDE numbers, and that's some of the numbers that were being compared to other studies. So that's why we're trying to keep everything apples to apples. If, if your max is less, is 22 or 27, you know, those numbers can be adjusted. It's, again, it's five classrooms per grade times the max that you would allow, that's, that would be your 100% capacity, and then you try to pull that back to 85. So you're right, we use 25 in everything, and if we wanted to reuse, recalculate those numbers with different maximum classroom sizes, we certainly can.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Members to my left, Sabrina Sinis.
Once again, thank you for a very comprehensive and detailed presentation. I feel like a lot of the information that I'm looking for, I'm actually finding as I'm looking through this presentation again, so I really appreciate that. I wanted to just get kind of a ballpark understanding in looking at option three. I'm, you know, looking at these, these drawings of, of everything that you've included and thinking, you know, this is a beautiful school. But we also have to balance it against what are our actual needs and, you know, the nice-to-haves versus the need-to-haves. If we were to try to just get a rough number of how we would kind of, I don't know, dissect that cost a little bit more, we've got $270 per square foot. What would be the approximate square footage per classroom?
I think in the program sheet that we had, we're showing 850 per classroom.
But then is there other square footage that gets, because I, when I looked at, say, option one, for 12,000 square foot of new construction, we get six classrooms. So like, do you have to account for hall space and things like that?
Yeah, there, we were adding bathrooms in that little six-classroom addition as well.
Okay, so maybe something closer to like 1,000 square feet, 1,200? I mean, if we wanted to try to tweak the numbers a little bit more to understand, you know, where we have some wiggle room in that $22.6 million for the proposed new construction?
Yeah, I mean, if there were, if there was a desire, you know, there's always going to be that, well, how, we like this, but how can we pull the cost back?
Right.
We can make it smaller. We can make classrooms smaller. We can, this is showing 625. We talked about an option where we dropped to 525, where we could take off kind of these corner classrooms here and here on two floors. You take those off, now it's a smaller capacity school, and we can always build those back on later, kind of like we're talking about at Worcester. There's areas of the gymnasium, does that start to get smaller? But then we start to look at, well, now are we taking away our ability to have youth functions there? So this as a, what do you think, day one, shows an 84,000 square foot building, and that's equals X amount of money. If we come back and say, let's reduce the capacity, let's reduce some of the things, pieces that we want to pull out, we can certainly do that. A lot of these things are right-sized, like we're showing two music rooms. You have two now, but one of them's a closet. So we're increasing the size of that.
I guess I was looking for something of a formula or a multiplier that we could use on our own to kind of get a better understanding of where, how much wiggle room do we have in that? But I guess that's something that you can come back to us with in further updates as we go down, if we go down this path or whatever path we go down. When we were talking about the, the capacity of the schools and the questions that Mr. Arnshaw brought up with our enrollment projections, I just wanted to point out that one thing that, that concerns me is, yes, we can have an elementary school functioning at 90% capacity for a year, but I think that there is a big difference between an elementary school functioning at 90% capacity for one year versus two years versus three years versus four years, and the stress and the strain that that puts on those students and those teachers functioning at that level over time, and the building itself, too. I mean, I, there's a reason that PDE gives us the 85% number, so I think we have to be mindful of that. The other concern I have there is that it wouldn't just be one elementary school that's functioning at 90%. We would end up with two and possibly three. And when you've got three-fourths of your schools just about maxed out, and then suddenly you've got more kids come in, you're really, you run out of options. So I'm not comfortable with, with going too much above that, that 85% threshold that PDE is giving us. One question I had about the decision points in this process. So obviously, we have a vote scheduled for next week for proceeding in the drawings, but then at what point do we have to narrow it down further to, you know, choose between option one, two, and three? Is that going to be with the November update? I want to make sure that, that we're cognizant of our timelines as we're moving along here.
Yeah. Let me, let me see if I can answer that. So part of what I was supposed to do in under number four is actually, you know, refer back to agenda item 13D. And under 13D, if I could and if you could follow with me. Under 13D, the agenda item reads, approve KCBA architects of Hatfield, PA to provide professional design and document services for new construction or renovations. And so it's an "or" statement. We would, while the board could direct them to provide design services for both, I can tell you that, you know, we're going to be paying like twice as much for, for those particular costs. So it is, it is important for the board to understand that. So that, that clearly has not been determined, so that's why it's documented that way. And then there's actually a different fees associated with, in terms of the architect's fees for the construction, associated with a renovation, and a different one for the new construction. So we would fill those items in and then that would move forward. Now, there's a number of other decision points along the way, once you decide whether or not you're going to go with renovation or you're going to go with new construction. And I don't want to speak out of turn here, but Mike, I think all along the way, there's, there's probably a half a dozen decision points that the board will have with an ultimate determination after they receive bids, you know, a year from now, about this time, where, you know, they could, at that point in time, with alternates and all sorts of other things that could be laid out, there are, there are, there are options for you to pull things out or to add things in based on how the bid documents are constructed, and certainly how you anticipate whether or not, you know, you want that extra space for STEM learning or you want the gymnasium to be bigger. You provide all those options, then you can, you can then use it as a menu of getting to your final building construction. But along, along the way, Mike, could you, could you share some other drop, stepping off points that the board would maybe likely make decisions?
Yeah, I think the decisions, the night you're spending money on a big building project is after you've opened the bid. So that's January of 2021, if the schedule continues. What we want to be deciding this month or next or very soon is which direction you're heading. Because as you said, you don't want to document two projects. So we feel like we're at the end of the study phase of should we renovate or should we build new? So if that's a decision the board is ready to make, then now we start. And that's a year of documentation, a year of coming back with 100 more varieties of that. You know, what does the outside look like? What's the place base look like? We've already heard a comment about can we move it in a little bit away from the property line? Sure. So we've got a year of those things and continual updates, budget updates along the way. We'll know bidding month after month if, if the market goes down or up, so we can start to adjust those things. But the point of that is we're, in order to stay on schedule and in order to be able to open this or anything else in August of '22, fall, this month, next month, is really kind of decision-making time. Where we said back in the spring, this is feasibility study time, this is decision-making time. My phone went off a minute ago. Somebody's at Lower Moreland, they're making this choice tonight on their high school. This is decision-making season. So it's, it's picking the avenue. You haven't started spending money on, on the building yet, but we are starting to spend money on us, on engineers, on, on the documentation. There's a lot of steps in that other schedule that I showed you. There's a lot of steps, and every other month, we can come every month to do board updates. We can pull it back, we can make it bigger, we can have all those things, but we do need to kind of pick a direction, renovate or new shortly.
Okay. I'm glad that I asked to clarify that then. So I, another question that came up, so looking at Worcester, one of the things that I know we've talked about, and I know in particular Ms. Cancro has brought it up with her experience at Worcester, is the traffic situation there. If we were to add those four classrooms, is there anything, I didn't see anything in those drawings discussing what the plan is for traffic?
And, and this is why we added some extra money into that budget. When we start to do these things, you're going to say we need four classrooms. We go, great. Then Mark's going to tell us about the seven things that are broken that need to be fixed. And then somebody else is going to say, well, this also needs to be expanded. And then we're going to talk about traffic issues. Yeah, there are other things that you could certainly fix on that site, it would just drive the costs up further. When you're adding four classrooms, you're adding capacity. Now, it's 100 kids who don't drive, but there's four teachers, maybe a fifth person for staffing. So do we have to go back to the municipality there and say, hey, we're really only adding five teachers, we think we can accommodate that in our existing parking? Okay, fine. If you were adding a gym addition, they may say, well, now your capacity is increasing, you need to add parking, you need to change, you know, entry and exit sequence into the property. So the goal would be to just deal with the enrollment growth there, just build that addition for educational and safety improvements and not have to do a whole lot of site work. If you wanted to do that, then that's, would be the time to do it, but that would obviously cost more money.
Yeah, I think it's a conversation, I guess, we'll have to have as a board, but from my understanding, I mean, it's, it's not the, the staff traffic, it's the, the arrival and dismissal, it's parents and buses, it's having a single means of entrance off of, you know, 73, that, that all of those things kind of create a lot of problems and potentially dangerous situations on that campus at arrival and dismissal. So that's something that we'll, I guess, have to address if we're going to pursue, and even if we don't pursue putting classrooms on that campus, it's a conversation I think we should have as a board. I know we've also brought up the Arcola and Skyview utilization, and I agree, that is something that has to be addressed, but I think if we have to prioritize what we need to address for our district, I would put that in priority as lower than dealing with this situation here with Arrowhead. I don't think that the two conversations have to happen at the same time. I think we've established that while there is available space at Arcola and Skyview, it's not sufficient to solve our facility problems in our elementary schools and, and our capacity problems at our elementary schools. So I do think we have to have that conversation, but I think that I'm comfortable putting that, maybe not on the back burner, maybe on the side burner, but, you know, putting it off just a little bit longer so that we can, you know, we're at decision time, we can, we can move forward with our decisions here on, on Arrowhead. I may have other questions and other points, but at this point, I think I've gone on long enough, so I'll move it on.
Thank you.
If I can interject, the one comment about Arcola, I think once this decision's made, I don't know what other options you have with Arcola.
Thank you for the level of detail on this study, and I appreciate the clarification on, especially on the piecemeal work via the facility assessment study and how that really changes based in, based on the new building codes. So I just want to make sure that I'm thinking of this the right way with the math and the capacity and the class size, so that the math I did shows that if we're looking at 500 as a capacity, that according to our, I mean, this is our board policy of 22 kids K to two, that really is 464 times 85% would, 85% would be 394. Is that, I'm just making sure I'm doing the math right. And then we currently have a current enrollment of 404. So to look at a building capacity of 500, we're actually under building for what we even have right now. And the same with the 625, if you look at it according to board policy, like Mike Ryan said, we're at 530, and then 85% of that would be, would be 450, I believe. So that would be the actual 85% functional capacity of the building according to our class size policy. Is that, am I correct with that?
Yeah, I think so in those numbers. And again, we're trying to keep 25 classrooms just because other studies have shown that in the past. So I agree with you, that's where you would be at 22 kids per class.
Could I ask just for clarification that when floor plans and the building capacity is on the slides and when it's posted online, could we parenthetically note this?
Sure.
On the slides, just for everyone's clarification, so that everyone, including board members, are, know exactly what we're talking about in terms of what the actual number of bodies in the building would be or could be. Thank you. And then I had a question when we were talking about the construction contingency, that it's generally lower on new construction than it is on a renovation. And I just was wondering, could we, as a district, please look into our records of when we built Eagleville, when we built Worcester from pretty new? I just want to know, were there any construction issues, water tables, building, like soil issues or anything? Could we have a historical perspective on our construction?
Yeah, we have, we've quite, as with any construction project, we have a number of documents that are supplied to us, you know, before construction and then after construction. I can tell you that on August 27th, Shepherd Restoration Engineering will be before you to discuss some of the things that they discovered with Eagleville Elementary School and the construction that was done there. And I think, without getting into a lot of detail this evening, that will have you recognize that while the documents are the documents, they don't necessarily reflect exactly what has occurred in some instances. And so what we've discovered there is not necessarily what we have undocumented.
Okay, so I guess if-
And so what I'm saying is there are certainly challenges, and so for us to say that with a renovation and while the contingency is higher, it's because they typically experience that same scenario, and they don't anticipate, when you open this wall, that that's not there, it's supposed to be here, it's not on the drawing correctly, there's a number of different avenues. And that's why he just puts a contingency there to say, hey, there's a likelihood of us discovering something that we didn't anticipate, that's not on the drawings, that wasn't substantiated in the conclusion of the construction.
I guess I'm just asking for if we could get, look at historically, any new construction that we've done in the district? Has there been any, any things that we could look at that were sort of outliers of what might have been expected that we could factor in, just so we aren't surprised? Are there, do we know if there's a high water table, or do we know that the soil is rocky or there's, I don't know.
I think what you're asking is if we're budgeting so much money for contingency, how often would you actually use all of that?
Or do we already have documents somewhere in this district that show us that maybe our contingency might be higher, but we need to just look at those documents?
Right. And then in those soft costs, there's a lot of testing. Because that contingency amount that we're telling you should hold on to is just kind of an industry standard, you should budget for this, but we don't want to utilize that. So we do an immense amount of tests ahead of time to try to make sure that all of those things are documented in the drawings so that we don't have to come back here. Those are horrible school board meeting nights where I go, all right, here's a list of seven things, three of which just weren't in the documents, and here's another one that we found because we drilled over here and didn't drill over there, and we found an issue. Even when those happen, it's still covered within contingencies. But those aren't fun nights out, because now we're, you know, you've committed, the trucks all are here, we're building a building, and now we're starting to add costs. It's the term change order. You're changing, the contractor said he's going to do this, and then we found some more things that they have to do. So it makes sense to budget that money, and what we can do is kind of share with you some of our experience in the past. If we're telling you to hold on to 5%, maybe you use 20% of it or 25% of it. It's good money to hold on to and budget. But again, I think we try to do more testing than most to make sure that we know more going into the project, so that we don't have those nights of, hey, I didn't know that, and I didn't know that.
Okay, and I just have one last thing. Since we're talking about the Worcester possible addition needed, since there is more space physically at Eagleville and the buildings are of a similar nature, I understand, would it be possibly a similar cost if we would choose to realign sending areas and maybe build on to Eagleville? Is that something? Or have you looked at Eagleville? Are they kind of interchangeable or not really?
We didn't. I think those types of numbers could be similar. We should look again to make sure, like here, we know we really can't expand this way because we're going to start hitting neighbors, and we really don't want to expand this way because now we're moving the parking lot. So we should look at each of those buildings and see, well, if we had to expand, is there one that would be less expensive or a little easier? I think here, there certainly are locations where that could be easily expanded to two or four classrooms. If you wanted eight, now that's, you know, now we're shooting something out the back. But I think one of the reasons you're looking at expanding this building is its location in the district. It is away from all of those other buildings. So if Arrowhead is here and has some space, we can move some kids from neighboring buildings. Worcester is much further away, so it makes more sense to allow for a larger capacity building there so that we're not busting kids from that area all the way down here or to Eagleville to right-size our capacities.
Well, Eagleville and Worcester have adjacent sending areas. So that's why I thought, like, I mean, it could be, we just nudge Eagleville over a little bit.
Sure.
And, you know, you're still in a general geographical area of the sending district. So that was just a thought, to see if that could be a similar situation of addition.
Yeah, if I just, if you don't mind, I'd add to that. So we had had that discussion, and certainly based on Mike's response, that the costs could generally be the same. The thing that we need to have a discussion about on the board before we decide whether it's Worcester or Eagleville is what is the long-term impact of the projected enrollment? It's very unlikely that we're going to see a significant increase to that, which will likely be in the vicinities more closely associated with Worcester. So where the land is and where the development can occur is likely where you need to be prepared, which brings us back to Ms. Arbula Sanis' concern about traffic. So there's another thing, big thing that has to be considered. So as you put more students on that property, you need to address the traffic. So your suggestion about Eagleville may lend itself well to, you know, a better solution at the end. But I think we need to, in all fairness, we need to say, yes, you need to direct me to say, we need to get another, you know, part of their scope is not to talk about Worcester. I'll be clear on that. It was just a matter of, we know that this was a thing that needed to be addressed, at least to give you an idea of what costs we would likely entail. But certainly, getting a KCBA or having KCBA do the work if we wanted to do that, go through a similar study for some additional classrooms based on the enrollment projections and other concerns that we have about that property and the Eagleville property, decide which is the best way to move forward in the near future. So good questions, good suggestions.
That was all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on my end?
Oh, sure. Why not? I want to just share my thoughts, since this is the area where our thoughts should be shared about our future voting. I appreciate, I was the one that asked for the summary of the estimated list, of the list on number eight. I appreciate it. I wish it wasn't so pretty and very small and slanted, because I think the numbers have to be seen by the community, that when you take the summary of the estimated costs and then you take the list of the improvements that Fidavia gave us, and then you look at the codes of 2015, to do renovations is just a high ticket. It's a high price. So whether we're looking, when you gave us the comparisons of renovations or building new, no matter what our programming is, whether we're going to do full-day kindergarten, capacities of whether we're doing the 550 or the 650, we're able to just do a comparison of apples to apples. And I just see a high price when you're looking at renovations. So I'm glad to see that. That's one thing I take from this. The other thing I think is important, that when I look at, on this slide, when we're looking at the projections, and I add up the numbers, and I understand, when you add up 2018, the enrollment for elementary school, I get 1,674. Then I go to 2022, and I get 1,736. And then I go to 2027, and I get 1,879. The numbers are going up. I don't understand why Arcola and the high schools stay the same, because in common sense terms, and I'm not the one that did the enrollment, it just doesn't make sense to me that Arcola and the high school have to continue to go up. So I don't understand how it's staying flat-lined, 1578, 1522, 1471. So I just believe that when we're going towards the red, when we're going to 109%, 101%, 120%, it's going to go into Arcola. I don't get why this number is staying at 50%. Enrollment study, common sense to me. So I feel like you keep talking about Arcola, it's going to get filled. It will get filled. I just see that. So that's my opinion. So that's one. And then the last thing is, I can only speak through the education committee and being on there. When you look at Worcester and Woodland, I think you talk to the principals, they will definitely give you a true understanding of where they make programming work. But when you're dealing with a 90% utilization, what I have heard through the education committee is you've got related services that are up on the stage doing OTPT. I see gifted working with the learning support classroom upstairs. I see the chorus going in the same classroom as orchestra. I see those mix of things happening. So in my opinion, we're trying to create an inclusion model, but we're so crowded because there's related services within that classroom, there's no quiet area for us to create those learning supports that we're supposed to provide by the law. So I just think 92% is just too high. We have to be able to respect the way our programming is happening. As you know, 19% of special education has risen since last year, so we're not even thinking about the students and the student needs. So it's not 92%. It's a 19% in special education in the gifted program. We just have to look at it. And it's not, it's just what I have to say, because I feel like being on the education committee, we have to look at programming and the needs of the students. So that's just my opinion, and that's it. No questions, though.
Thank you, Ms. Cancro.
I'll make this quick, but I was at the Sladington visit, and I was at all three of the other buildings that we visited, and I asked to go see a renovated building because I think it is important. We got to move on. We have to decide, we had to decide for budgeting, being on property and being on education committees, two most costly committees in the district. We have a lot to do facility-wise, and you're all going to be seeing that, if you're not aware, next week. So we need to make this decision. And I did ask to see Sladington because it's very difficult for me to make the decision to rebuild, not seeing a renovation. The renovation was beautiful. KCBA did an impeccable job. I walked out of there thinking, great, we have good people here working, that are going to be working for us. But it was a very different situation. And I just want to reiterate that to everyone. These are the four main points I made up. Most were set here tonight, but it was a different building, a different type of building, no other land. The community wanted to keep the building. It's a very small community. It had a lot of emotional appeal to them. The only other thing, the code, what has been helpful to me doing the homework this summer is understanding the code problems. It is very difficult to take anything and change it in 2019, that's so old. So that has helped me. The only thing not mentioned was the exterior of the Sladington building was in much better shape than Arrowhead. So for me, just for you all sitting here and for me being in Sladington and for me knowing what's going on at Eagleville, and there was a member of the public at the property meeting last night who was upset with the amount of money that we're spending at the high school, we cannot let any of our buildings get to this point ever again. So that's why we're spending money on our other buildings, so that we're not in this situation anymore. So I'm finally at the point where I can say, we did our homework, we need to rebuild. We got all the community input. Do I want to do it? No. So the only other thing that I will add, and then we can hopefully go on to the next thing, is continually throughout the visits of the new building and this Sladington building, is we don't need a Taj Mahal. It would be wonderful to have a Taj Mahal, but I look at this $34 million number, and I keep saying, if that's what it is, because it's 2022 and costs have gone up and steel's more expensive and et cetera, it is about the students and the teachers and the parents. And yes, we need room for special ed, and we need, you know, now I notice, you know, every, nobody has cubbies anymore. Everyone has these, every single building, even the renovated one, has these closed little lockers in elementary school. If that's what everyone has, fine, but I, we need to keep this within realistic limits. I work for a district that's very highly regarded, and their facilities are bare-bones. They're, most of them are new, they're big, they're clean, but they're, you know, they're bare-bones. I'm not saying we have to go bare-bones, but I just want to make that clear, because learning staircases are really nice, but being a teacher, learning staircases don't, aren't needed, in my opinion. STEM space, I get, but I just want to, I want you all, being the educator on the board. So I would just say that again. And then just to add to what Dr. Zerby said about the capital fund, if we are rebuilding, we do, I am interested in making the gym more usable. We all know from this community, there isn't enough places in our community to go sometimes. They're over, the other buildings are being utilized, parking in the buildings are being utilized very much. If there is a way to get some funding for the community space, I would like to see that. My husband's a real estate developer. I won't get into too many details, but the reason Wawa has so many darn Wawas, and we think, why is there a Wawa on every corner, is because it protects the Wawas. When there's more people going to that one and more people going to that one, it's so that the buildings are protected. You know, the Eagleville gym is used extensively. So anyway, so that, that's my opinion.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. I appreciate those comments. Any other comments?
I had one comment, just some of the things I heard after I initially spoke. It's starting to seem to me that we're looking at Arrowhead in a silo. Just addressing the Arrowhead issues, whether we renovate or rebuild, after my comments, I heard concerns with the 90% capacity that we're not fully addressing that exists today in Worcester, and I think it was Woodland. That's not being addressed. I've heard issues about parking at Worcester. I've heard concerns with the enrollment projections for Arcola and Skyview are not accurate. And I also heard that we don't need to address Arcola now, we'll just take care of that later. So it really seems to me we're not taking a comprehensive look at our facilities. And if you go back to the study, there's issues with Farina, the Bus Depot, the maintenance building, there's a lot of stuff here, and I feel like we're only addressing one piece of it. We're not taking a comprehensive look, and that's concerning, because decisions now could impact future decisions that may or may not impact this financial. So just wanted to add that piece.
Sure.
Just in, I'm not good at visualizing what 850 square feet is per classroom, which I think is what you said was on the plan. Is that comparable to what we currently have in the other schools here?
In the other schools, yeah.
So those are approximately 850?
Yeah, and again, the challenge is you can have 850 square feet and then make it a diamond, and it feels really small. In the other schools that you have, that's where that 850 number was coming from. So it's comparable to that. So it's comparable to that. And then what we can do is provide what I would say is a bit more efficient storage in those rooms to make them feel even a little bigger. Because you, when you have a classroom and then there's a whole bunch of stuff all over the floors, it makes that feel smaller. So in the design that we've been looking at here is to provide, I think we saw some really good storage options in some of the other buildings that we saw, you know, get all those Tupperware containers off the floor and into a storage area someplace and now you've got more space for the kids.
If I could just add to that comment and to one Ms. Reese made, I think it's important to recognize that much of the direction and comments from the public are around, we don't need a Taj Mahal and we don't need something that's significantly different than what we have in some of our newer elementary schools. So part of what you see here is you don't see the learning staircases that we witnessed in two of the newest buildings that we went to. But we certainly know that, you know, we're trying to, you know, and this, again, this is only the, this is really the starting phase of this. So I mean, there's, you know, while you have a number up there that says $34 million, I mean, there's certainly options that the board will have. And as the process unfolds, if you choose to proceed, as that process unfolds, they'll be doing a lot of the legwork to better understand what the costs actually are likely to be versus using percentages and estimates based on just experience. So they'll get into all the things about, you know, what's particular to our land, what's particular to the township needs and whether or not they're going to, you know, forgive any of the potential fees. They're going to get into all the things that are associated with trying to bring home to the board a number that is certainly much more solid and is the most solid number prior to going out to bid on the project, so that the bid documents reflect what the likely outcome will be in the future and predicting and basing on all the information that we know. So we certainly don't want a document that has a learning staircase in it if we know that that's not even an acceptable option for us. So, you know, we will, we will, you know, address a lot of those items as we, again, if the board proceeds, go through the schematic phase. And at any phase in this process, I mean, the board could certainly say, you know what, maybe we're going in the wrong direction, we want to go somewhere else. You know, the major challenges with making a lot of twists and turns in a process is A, you might delay the schedule to some degree, and B, there may be some additional soft costs associated with, you know, rethinking some things. But honestly, until the point in time where we receive bids and we're in front of the decision about what is going to be built, while we're going to be likely spending money as we proceed, the big expense will be when we approve a set of bid documents that are before us. And that's more than, that's about a year away. And all the information that you want in terms of specifics about what it is that the building will look like and what those expenses will be and how exactly it will impact the budget, today, all we have are best estimates based on the information that the professionals know, that we know. And, you know, I think it's clear that A, this board has made it a commitment to keeping Arrowhead as a school here operating as a K through four elementary school. As such, I think based on the fact that our professionals, KCBA, has recommended in their initial presentation that the construction of a new school is the best option for this district to consider and that the administration, including building principal and the staff here at Arrowhead, would concur with that recommendation as well. So those, I always wanted to share that with the board. Certainly, we are in no position here this evening to make that decision, but it is, it is my recommendation that we, as 13D states, that we make a determination to direct KCBA to move forward with, upon my recommendation, the schematic design phase for the construction of a new Arrowhead elementary school. So that's what I'd like you to consider. And if that is so the case, I can tell you that the fees associated with a new construction, and I'm going to look at Mr. Sakala here real quick from Fidavia. I believe that the new construction fee is 5.4%. Is that accurate? Is that correct?
Yeah, you had asked.
So, so, you know, everyone's apprised of what that means. And if we were to do renovation, that fee would likely be 5.8%. And so not that, not that those percentages should determine what path you take, I just want to be clear about what the agenda item will so read if you choose to go one path or the other. And generally speaking, in a renovation, the fees for architectural services are higher. Is that accurate?
Yeah, in a renovation, you're.
Generally speaking, I'm not a.
Yeah, absolutely.
So questions with the motion, but the motion should be from the board to do one or the other, either to build, meaning new construction, or to renovate, and then the associated percentage will be placed in there. And then it is up to the solicitor to finalize the contract associated with the professional firm. I will let you also know that we're recommending KCBA because of the work that they've done, the thoroughness of their work, and also the professionalism associated with this whole process. So that, those are my comments for this evening.
Since we're that much closer, possibly seven days away from making the build or renovate, I just want to add the other thing about Sladington that was interesting to see is they were able to keep the students in the building while they renovated. It was such a small, a small number of students and the way that it was broken up, they were able to close off one part of the building and work around, which is going to be more difficult for us. So that was another deciding factor for me, just so you're all aware.
Thank you. So there may be other comments and we can certainly take them. I just want to look at the board president. We have, you know, we've spent a lot of time on this conversation and it's very important, but I just want you to know that one other matter that the board really should consider before making any such decision is the financing associated with that and how a new construction process might impact, you know, our tax base, our borrowing capacity and our budgeting. So with that said, do we want to take any more questions right now or do we want to see that presentation and do a final wrap-up questions overall?
Knowing the temperament of this board, I'm thinking we do some questions now and then we'll probably have more questions again after Mr. Booker's presentation. I know it makes for a longer meeting, but I also know that's just how we work best. So Mr. Nevarret, I think you had something.
Yeah, I have to address the comment that Brian made about this being looked at as an isolated project. This, Brian, it's borderline irresponsible. This whole effort came out of a facility study and a comprehensive master plan to look at how we repair and renovate our school district so that it can function for the next 10, 20, 30 years. That's why we ended up closing Arrowhead. That's why we addressed Autobomb. That's why we've talked about redistricting. That's why we're looking at Warsester. None of this is done in isolation. Every time we turn up a rock, we find two new worms that we've got to address. But none of this is done in isolation. This is part of the comprehensive approach to what we're doing.
Where's the comprehensive plan to address the underutilization in our COLA? First of all, I find your comment somewhat offensive, I will tell you. I don't think it's irresponsible at all. I think it's fiscally responsible to be looking at all these things and developing a comprehensive plan to address all these issues in the district when it comes to facilities. Building a new Arrowhead without fully addressing a building that's utilized less than 60% is fiscally irresponsible.
I'm not going to relitigate the whole our COLA discussion. We went there. You could have come with us, you could have looked in the building, you could have put your own eyes on it. We've got a classroom-by-classroom analysis of what's happening in that building. We sat here as a board and we voted, I think it was eight to one, to decide that we weren't going to consolidate into that building as part of our comprehensive approach to what we're doing. This is not isolated.
I understand. I know the vote we've taken, but that vote is not binding and I want to make sure that we're considering all the facts. I mean, I've done an analysis on my own, taking a look at, and I'm glad to share with you, I was going to at the end of the meeting, with a new Arrowhead at 90%, granted, you could argue 85 versus 90, at 625, there's 19 extra classrooms across the district. Looking at all the buildings combined, 19 extra classrooms. Now, if you're telling me you're going to fill out with full-day kindergarten, where's the plan to fund full-day kindergarten? I've seen nothing. I'm sure Mr. Booker, when he presents the financial side, does not have a plan in addition to taking on how to the additional debt service. I see a smirking, so you can laugh all you want.
To address the issue of full-day kindergarten, whether we as a board decide on full-day kindergarten, I know there are a number of us up here who are in favor of full-day kindergarten. No, no formal vote has been taken, but there's also been talk in Harrisburg about mandating full-day kindergarten. So I would hate to see us as a district be in a position where Harrisburg has dictated, you must have full-day kindergarten, and we're scrambling because we don't have the space for it. And while I don't necessarily agree with the manner that it was expressed, I do agree with some of the sentiment that Mr. Nevarret is sharing. I do think that we did look at our COLA, we did look at Skyview, we saw that there was available space. Yes, maybe there will be 19 extra, or not extra, available classrooms throughout the district, but we're dealing with students and not widgets. And that's where I think we have to understand that, yes, we might have some, an open space here and an open space there and an open space there. And so we need three classrooms for a first grade, so there you go. Well, no, it doesn't, it can't work that way. So it's not just a question of how many open seats we have in how many buildings. The other thing we have to look at is our latest enrollment numbers. I mean, we're already, I know that there are people who are skeptical of the numbers that we got from Mylona McBroom. And even if you want to say that maybe the Mylona McBroom numbers were high, as some people have asserted, we're already trending above those. So I don't see how we can't address this, the enrollment issue at the elementary level first. And I also, I think we've already kind of asked and answered the question of whether or not we can fit these students at our COLA and Skyview. I mean, facilities aside, that campus can't handle any more traffic. So I mean, we've had the conversations and I get it that it's not necessarily the decision that you would make, but I do think that we as a board did make that decision.
What does that have to agree to disagree then?
Any other comments? Anyone from my right? Anyone else from my left?
May I ask a question regarding item 13D or should I wait until we get to that point in the agenda? Okay. So item 13D, a vote in favor of that, if I did my math correctly, is a vote to spend 1.855 million under a new construction scenario? That's a 5.4% of the 34.4 million new construction cost.
I think that it means that along the way, if in totality the cost of the project is $34 million, which is basically an estimate at this point in time, and B, until the point that we actually complete construction and all site work, that yes, you would be accurate in saying that that is the math associated with that. I will tell you that it is, well, no, that, so I think, I think there's, correct, correct. So I think there's, you know, certainly decision points along the way, as I was referring to earlier. If you do not choose to accept any of the bids at a year from now, and we don't build a new Arrowhead, I mean, there's less fees associated with that whole project. So, but ultimately, it'll be in the neighborhood of that number.
Okay, so just a vote in favor of that is a vote to spend 1.855 million, roughly?
Sorry, I can't hear you. I can't hear you. 34, okay, so. So 1.5 million, roughly, okay.
And is the funding of that number in Mr. Booker's presentation that's coming?
Mr. Booker?
The cost in the presentation is for a $35 million bill.
I'm sorry, say that again?
The cost in the presentation is presented at the finance committee was for $35 million to build.
Okay.
Actually, it's the $35 million plus master plan projects along the way. Is that accurate?
Well, yes. It has the master plan included in it as well as the $35 million. $14 million of the $35 million is already part of the master plan. That was the Arrowhead amount that was allocated for it.
Okay, but the timing of the fee for KCBA, because the $35 million didn't get borrowed until a year or two down the road, starting?
We can give that presentation.
Okay, but what I'm saying is the funding, if it's coming, that's fine.
Yes.
Okay.
So the plan was to borrow nine and a half million dollars in 2020, $18 million in 2021, and $18 million in 2022.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments on KCBA's presentation or any of the other discussions that we've had at this point? If not, I'll ask Mr. Booker if he would please prepare for presenting the financials. Thank you, Mr. Booker. And thank you, Mike and Jamie from KCBA. We appreciate it.
Okay, good evening. Can you hear me on this? Okay. So tonight, we're going to go over the debt scenarios that were presented at the finance committee. The two different scenarios were built upon, the prior scenarios that were presented, one being no debts, no new debt at all, what that would look like, one being just doing a master plan, and then scenarios, two other scenarios, having a $25 million Arrowhead rebuild and a Arrowhead with just the renovations associated with it, which was, is just basically the master plan. When we did the initial presentation, that was the idea that was presented of $25 million. Then the presentation from KBAC had the number jump up to $35 million, so we did a change in that scope to do the presentation for the finance committee. So what it does, in scenario one, you'll see that the nine and a half, 18, 18, and the nine and a half, that's where the Arrowhead funds will be coming in from. We will still be doing the master plan work during that timeframe as to not lose ground. One of the ideas that was presented at the meeting was to borrow the remaining 4.6 million that we can still get this year and stay under the bank qualified. The other presentation was the same basic presentation with the exception that we did not do a second borrowing in 2019 and what the impact on that debt would be. The key things to take away on this is the numbers on the right-hand side, which is our debt service. Key area that I'll point at is, I don't think we have a laser pointer in this that I know how to use, right here? 11.6 million, and when I go back over here, it's 11.8 million. So the 4.6 million taken in the front will have an impact because obviously you're borrowing it and you're increasing the debt in that time. The key thing to look at this and the other presentations that were done is the difference in what we're doing is really going to be dependent on the interest rates that we get at the time as well as the length of time. But overall, the impact to the annual bond payments per se or the debt service, we relatively about the same, maybe have a $400,000 increase at some point in time to the numbers that you see here, depending on what we decide to do. We could do so many different scenarios, but without having a formal plan as to what we're going to do yet, we did not. plan as to what we're going to do yet, we did not dive into all the different options for how we could do the borrowing, the timing of the borrowing, and impacts. We'll say that our recent borrowing has rates lower than were projected in this. Our recent borrowing came in at 2.1% over the time period that we're doing it. This year, our payment is only at 1.4%. So the numbers and interest are factored in this, is actually higher than today's rates, and rates right now are really continuing to drop, which are strong for whatever decision we make to do, for the borrowing needs that this school district will have. And that's the end of my presentation.
Are there questions for Mr. Bricker? So in summary, Mr. Bricker, if we weren't going to be borrowing the $35 million and continuing with projects associated with the master plan with other buildings?
That is correct. That was the original request of the finance committee.
And we're seeing that on an annual basis, there will be about, at least, in what year will we see some major, well, the major increases are showed in the years. Is that correct?
Yeah, so you're going to, right in this time period right here, the 2023, 2024, and 2025 is where you're soon to see the numbers really hitting the top area. Again, it's going to come down to interest rates and borrowing at length of time. We do wraparound bonds. I could extend it out further, keeping the debt service lower. There's a million different options that we can do to keep this at a number that we choose to go to. If we wanted to have the bonds go out beyond, right now, we're coming out at 2020, 2036. If we wanted to extend that out to 2039, that could lower the payments. It really depends on what we're doing. The longer you extend the payments, there will be more interest and overall costs. So with that, with any debt that you do.
Questions for members of the board? Am I right? Mr. Marshall?
So if I can read those numbers, so the 20, looking at the column far right, the 2019 number is 9,152?
At the time they prepared it, yes. That was before our borrowings this year, too.
Okay. And then, what year is it that gets to 11,764?
11,784.
784, sorry.
It's 2025.
So that's over, seven years?
Six, depending on how you look on it, yeah.
Six years. So on average, debt service will go up 400,000 every year for the next six years.
That's correct.
Factor into the budget.
But that also, but you're also doing the master plan, so that does factor into that increase. So it's not just Arrowhead that's making that increase of the 400,000. There's also the master plan, it's to add into that number.
Right, but the planned capital expenditures result in that level of increase in the debt service?
Yes.
Okay, so on average, it goes up 400,000 a year, roughly. And from an Act One tax increase, another point of reference to everyone should keep in mind, Act One tax increase generates 1.8 million in revenue at 2.3% roughly?
It can, yes. It really depends on the assessments, but yes.
Okay, so just keep in mind, for everyone at the table, 25% of a 2.3% tax increase will go to fund increases in debt service over the next six years, under this borrowing scenario.
Under this scenario, we could come up with different scenarios. They could change that also.
But this wasn't being proposed and evaluated, it would just back to next week's vote?
I can do any financing. No financing has been proposed. This is just.
No, no, I'm saying that this is an example of what the borrowing scenario could be. We will know closer to a year from now what the actual borrowing scenario will be when we have rates at that particular time. We know what the actual amount is that we need to borrow, and what other associated master plan projects have we spent money on up to that point, and what we plan to do in the very near future. So I think that this is the best prediction of what might occur, and it is, however, it is a recommendation that as we proceed forward, that we do address the conversation about the remaining money in the 2019, bless you, 2019 borrowing. We believe that if, in fact, we proceed forward with the design work with KCBA, or whoever the architect may be, to do a new construction or renovation, there are soft costs associated with that work, and it's best if we conduct the borrowing now to cover that particular soft cost, and leverage those funds, which are typically required to be used within a three-year period, so that we can, you know, use those funds in the second and third year when construction would actually occur, or renovation would actually occur. So it's a matter of making sure that we maximize the available rates under the bank qualified status that we typically try to go after. It hasn't been always the case for us, but it is typically the safest bet to go on that rate. So if we're talking about a vote next week, we're talking about a vote, yes, to spend some money, and we're talking about a vote to prepare a plan to address this facility. Absent of that vote, would be either to prolong a potential resolution, but it doesn't take out the consideration that other renovations in the master plan are going to be required over this period of that plan. So whether we do it on a year-by-year basis, or whether we do it on a, you know, a two-year major renovation project, or whether we do a full-scale new construction, that cost is going to be there, and debt is likely going to be required to be incurred, so that we can address the facilities that I believe prior boards, most recently to this one, and this board, have recognized that we've not necessarily kept up with all those renovations and maintenance that we probably should have. And then that is the whole purpose behind having the 2016 master plan facilities assessment commissioned, and that's how we're using that as a basis today, to make those improvements. So I think that regardless of what the decision is, some type of debt schedule that will increase our debt over the next several years, it'll just be a different number. It may actually be a different increase from year to year, but it's going to be an increase.
And that's provided we stay within the same timeframe.
Right, and I understand all the variables. I'm just trying to confirm, this is based on best information available today, which is fine. And I understand that it could change, and I accept that, but as I'm thinking about this, I need to understand what the debt service impact is of what's being put on the table. And this seems like it's the best information available, which is fine, and I understand it could change.
So in the long-term planning, I think we had come up with a number related to the master plan and the additional debt services that we were taking. If I recall, I think that was like $300,000 in the long-term planning in the additional debt service, not total debt service, but yearly increase to the budget. Is that correct? Was it 300 or 350?
I, is it 300 or 350?
It was 350.
350. So the 350, I'm not discounting this, and I know somebody's going to spin it that I'm discounting the large size of these numbers, but I'm just saying, we have used a long-term projection with 350 already in it for the eight or five, eight or nine million dollars that we're going to use. So the second question I have is that, do we believe that we need to borrow, I know that we have continuing upkeep, but do we believe with the things that we are, so we have done two or three years of approximately $20 million of repairs on roofs and mechanical. There were things in the master plan that we were not going to probably do ever, or at least in my belief. I'm not sure anybody had a belief in putting in a new auditorium at the high school, and that was a big-ticket item, for example. There's items that have been fixed off of that list along the way that have also dropped off. So my question is, and, we closed Audubon, and we have $12 million in Arrowhead that potentially would get absorbed with this financing also. So do we believe that the eight, after you get into 2024, the eight and a half million is the requirement as we show this over 10 years on the master plan?
It's an estimate based on the information that was provided originally on the master plan. That number could be up, it could be down, based on bids, where the results come in, what the actual discoveries are on the projects. It's just a forecast at this point in time.
I think you make a really good point. You know, there's probably a falloff at some point, but I guess some of the other comments associated that, where we're probably going to discover things that weren't part of the facilities assessment that we need to address. And so I think there'll be a combination over time where, hopefully, we can get to what's called the normalcy, that these projects are factored into the regular operating budget, and we'll stop having to borrow at such a large amount.
Sure. So, and I know what the, so the takeaway, if you look at 2023, 2024, 2025, 9.4 million, we're adding $2 million, that is the significant change in the short term, relative, medium term. But the longer change is the, we were going to drop down to approximately $2 million in 2029, and we're going to still have $10 million of debt service. So, and I realize that that is a lot of money. However, at the same time, if we had that money and had put it away for additional buildings or repairs over the years, everybody would be screaming that we had all this money locked up. So it's a balance. I don't like the wraparound. I would prefer to see more principal paid earlier in the process. But the financial situation of school districts requires this type of financing that pushes, that kicks the can down the road. We're not any different than, we're actually much better than a federal government. We have a plan that would actually pay this off at a certain point in time. I am advocating for a tax, for a debt schedule that I don't like, but it's the reality of public education that we would have to do something like this. Because if you did something too early, you would get your legs cut off. If you go to use debt service at the back end, they're saying you're paying too much interest. At the main, the main principle of all this is public education and the service in the best way. So I hope that we can get a much smaller number for a total cost down the road, and maybe the total cost has to include, this total cost includes a Worcester improvement. But unfortunately, I anticipate the comments, and I anticipate valid concerns as taxpayers. But as an advocate for public education, I have to swallow this and support something like this, because it's what we have to do to continue to keep the fact at its level.
Thank you, Mr. Navarette.
Yeah, Paul, so just to answer your question about the eight and a half versus the, I think what I've seen now, property the last year and a half, two years, has been that, I don't think the number's eight and a half, right? I think the last two years, we've been below that. And then we've actually, we've used our budget surpluses to offset the amount we've borrowed. So we've been under, we've borrowed less than that eight and a half over the last couple of years. So we've made up ground in the last two years that we otherwise weren't scheduled to. I think there are things in this, in this that could be changed. I mean, there are things, you know, we've got a number under 2028, you know, our current master plan only runs till 2027. You know, I would argue that there's money in those outer years that's associated with Arrowhead that probably should be pulled forward, which only exacerbates Brian's point about the bumps in those couple of years. But I think on the whole, this paints the picture that everybody needs to see, that, yes, it's affordable. Yes, the wraparound sucks. But I think keeping the debt at manageable levels, and over time, with a little bump there, it does become, it is a decreasing part of our budget. I think that's, that's what we've advocated for, right? All the finance committee meetings where we've talked about, you know, should we put money into the capital reserve as opposed to continuing to borrow, right? At some point, you got to make that, you got to make that transition.
Any other comments?
Thank you, Mr. Bricker. So then, I believe that answers all the presentations for, scheduled for this evening. We will likely have Fidavia come forward when we get to the items under the master plan in just a few minutes. Please note that on August 27, Shepherd Restoration will be here to provide the board with a comprehensive review of a facility report and recommendation based on the master plan evaluation done to the Eagleville Elementary School. There'll be reports from the committees, and there's a TRIP advisement. There was a TRIP that was required to be approved outside of our normal schedule as per Policy 121. We're just advising you that that was approved. There's some personnel advisements that are there as well. We'll look at the minutes, and then we'll have a discussion on the fiscal items. Mr. Bricker?
Real quick question on one of the advisements, real quick. The French teacher, while you're getting yourself together, the French teacher, that's going from split high school in Arcola to just Arcola. Yes, is that, is she full-time? She's not full, that's not full-time?
Yes, that is a full-time position. So the, it originally was set up, she would teach one class at the high school, four classes in Arcola. When they did this schedule, she has now needed five periods at Arcola due to increased enrollment into some of those classes.
Oh, okay.
On that, does it include the change that Dr. Magano put for the eighth grade?
Mr. Bricker, fiscal items?
This month, for your approval, we have the list of bills, the treasurer's report. There are no budgetary transfers. We have the approval of contractual services retroactively approved by Karen Mossup of College of LPA as an independent contractor to provide bus routing services for the period of August and September 2019 at a rate of $5,000 per month. For a student, we'll reimburse the district for this expense. Appraisal Service Tax Appeal authorizing engagement of Matt Tereska, MIA, MAI, Vice President of CBRE to appraise a property located at 2750 Morris Road for all years. Issues noted in the Montgomery County Court of Common Pleas, docket MCCCP 12-30519. The cost is $5,000 for the first year, $1,800 for each subsequent year. Total cost is $17,600. We also have five master plan summer projects 2019, and one summer 2020 project master plan.
James from Fidavia, do you want to address the board with any of those particular projects? Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. We have five items for presentation to you for your review tonight. First item is the approval of the tri-county mechanical. It's a change order MC002 in the amount of $10,156. This is, this includes the replacement of the high school's cooling tower surge tank standpipe and level controls at a cost of $8,680, and also includes a change order for the increase of size of one of the grease interceptors at the high school kitchen due to revised flow calculations, and that's at a cost of $1,476. The second item is to approve AGM Electrical for change order EC002 in the amount of $866 to provide power to the new level controls at the high school boiler room. The third item is approve Earth Engineering Corporation in the amount of $3,000 not to exceed to provide third-party inspections of compaction of backfilling and concrete testing for the Stonewater project at Woodland Elementary. Fourth item is approve Kaufman Iron Works. This is for the amount of $4,600 to fabricate a staircase to access the mechanical room at Woodland Elementary. Item number five is approve Blackney Hayes of Philadelphia, and for a cost of $12,790, and this is to carry out the egress and security petitioning study at Eagleville, Woodland, Worcester Elementary, along with Skyview Upper Elementary and Arcola Intermediate School.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Any questions from members of the board on the items that were, that are listed here? They were all covered in the property committee meeting that was scheduled for last evening, so I recognize that as our notes said on the agenda, that these items wouldn't be on here until later today. So I know you might not have a chance to review them, but are there any questions at this moment in time on those this moment in time on those items? If seeing none, we'll go on to the master plan summer projects. And just so you're aware of this, you may recall that I believe in June, it was, no, it was July, the board authorized the administration to proceed with getting a design and document preparation work for about approximately $14 million in worth of projects. We discussed at that time that that doesn't necessarily mean that we are looking to borrow or do $14 million worth of projects in the summer of 2020, but it does mean that it will provide us a number of responses to a number of different projects that will allow the board to take on any number of those projects up to the $14 million. As part of that discussion, we pulled off a particular item because there needed to be more discussion at the property committee, and that item was the high school storage facility. And just in retrospect, there was a summary of the matter that was shared with the board earlier this afternoon. Certainly, I don't expect you to have had time to review that. So if there aren't any particular questions at this moment in time, I just wanted to clarify that back in July, the number that was before you was almost a million dollars for that stored facility. It has been reviewed as requested and presented to the property committee, and it's estimated to be about $537,000 based on the new scope of the work. Is there anything else, Mr. Miller, that you need to add to that?
Yeah, I apologize for putting out those two other proposals. The logic that we had at that time was trying to maximize the amount of square footage to for the storage, whereas this one is now a 3,000 square foot storage to come into the budget number that we originally proposed.
And if you recall, what you're actually approving, what this item is actually approving is for Fidavia to get the design services to come back and go out the bids. It doesn't mean that you're approving a storage facility at this moment in time. It means that you would be getting the bit, the work done to have bids and numbers put before you. So I think that similar to the other $14 million worth of projects, this would be similar. So take, take a moment to, over the next several days, to look at the documents shared with you. I'd be glad at the voting meeting to have conversations in further detail about that. Okay? With that, we'll go on to personnel items. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Personnel items, Mr. Regina.
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. We're passing down some sheets. The print is small, I recognize that, but front and back on that shows some of the details of the personnel items for this evening's agenda. Just a few follow-up comments that you're going to notice in the personnel side of the agenda. One of them, you'll notice the term retroactively being used. What this means is obviously the action that we need to take with those individuals will happen before the board vote next week. And the reason for most of those is based on the start of our school year actually happens the day before or that morning for some of our individuals. So you will see more of that in July and August almost every year, and some of those we're working on. We talked about with supplemental contracts, making that change in the future with this, the transition that we're looking at. So just kind of wanted to say that upfront. You will also notice, you will notice next week that there are items on the voting agenda that are not on this agenda. We are, we have interviews stacked right up to the end of the week, and even on Monday and Tuesday. We lose people as fast as we get them, and that's the nature of the beast at this time of the year, and we're working very quickly to get those processed and approved. And you will notice the internal moves for teachers, the domino effect that we refer to often, will stop at the end of this week. So what will happen is there will be no more internal transfers. We will still post the positions internally, but people will not be moved to those positions until the start of next school year. So that way, we can move forward and have names that are going to be permanently in those positions. So with that being said, we can actually start the agenda. One item for professional resignations, that individual has accepted a position in another district. We have eight items for classified resignations. These vary in reasons, and I can certainly go through each one of them, but they vary from exploring teaching opportunities, grad school. We have two individuals that have gone to private industry, one for retirement. So some of those reasons do vary, and I have two of them that I'm still following up with to determine why we received resignations. We have three establishment for positions, one third grade at Arrowhead, one first grade at Woodland, and one first grade at Worcester. We have two employment of classified positions. One is a PCA position to meet the needs of incoming students, and one is replacing one of the resignations, the Blake resignation on the agenda. We have three items for change of status professional. One is becoming a full-time teacher due to the establishment of the .5 position kindergarten this July. One is a transfer to a potential new position that's on your agenda for Arrowhead at third grade, and one is a transfer from the domino effect of the art retirement that we had last June. We have six change of status for classified positions, and most of those are based on replacements. One is added hours needed as a PCA, and two are reduction of hours based on some of our title numbers that we received. We have three professional uncompensated leaves. All three of them are medical reasons, some FMLA, and then one is child rearing. We have one classified uncompensated leave. This is also medical and potentially child rearing, but we have not received that update yet. We have nine supplemental contracts, and I can update those as well. The first one is left off the June's agenda, was something that we missed, so we wanted to make sure that we got that on this one. The second one came in to assist our program. Unexpectedly, we needed that, and that person was able to come in. The third one is teachers that are forced to move classrooms, or asked to move classrooms in transfers, are awarded the moving contracts. Those that select to move based off of interviews and open positions are not awarded these contracts. The fourth one is a transition period. We talked about a little bit as we're going through this transition. The next three are the seasons will already have begun for these individuals by the time you vote on it next Tuesday. Some have already started. And the last one is this individual filled into sub for us when an individual had to go on leave unexpectedly. We have two classified substitutes, one item on the volunteer list. We have one item for the establishment of supplemental contract, and that position, there may be some questions on this, but some of the direction is this is there is a shifting of the functions that we need at the assistant principal ranks at the high school. And in order to do this, we need to recognize that that individual cannot be here 12 to 14 hours a day, every day. So that this would be a necessary move for us. And then the job description that accompanies that is one of the items as well. Thank you.
So I think there's a, there's a number of places that I want to make some comments while there might be some other questions. Let's take a look at page, well, it'll be item 10E employment, no, I'm sorry. The three positions, one for third grade Arrowhead, one for Worcester, and one for Eagleville. There is a sheet in front of you that looks something like this, and I'm just going to refer to this, just to give you a quick example. This provides, this provides a summary of what transpired as a result of our review of the data and the displaced students that up to, up until last week were likely to be going to schools that are outside their sending area. So as an example, there was a number of first graders across the district that were currently scheduled to go to a school that's outside of their designated sending area where there's space available and no space available in their home school. In addition to that, that also means that there are quite a number of kids unprecedented in our experience that will be going to schools where their neighbors are going to another school. And that in itself, while a challenge, this particular challenge in forecasting it out also suggested that this will be a two-year process, which then brings us into a challenge of making sure that allowing, you know, families to stay intact within their local schools in addition to knowing that now we have potentially a need for the child to stay for third grade and maybe even fourth grade, and then all of a sudden, they're displaced out of their local sending school. So with your approval next Tuesday, it's my recommendation that those two first grade positions be added. Those will be, we'll have to absorb those within the existing budget. We are, we believe that we'll be able to do that, otherwise we wouldn't make this recommendation. And you should also know about the Arrowhead third grade, that stemmed from, you know, extensive discussion with the staff as well as with the building principal, and based on enrollment that was maxed in that particular grade and some of our other concerns, we're recommending that that third grade teacher be added as well. It's my understanding, just so is your understanding, that while you have not approved this yet, it is my recommendation for the best sound delivery of our programs for this school year. On that same sheet, it also indicates what the enrollment would be based on those that have actually enrolled and those that are on our list to, for appointments, that we know what grades and buildings that they're going to go to. So with all of the reshuffling, we are still at a place where we have three, we have four students in the district that are displaced at this point in time compared to... How many? It's a lot. So it's more than, how many, did anybody count them? About 20. So, you know, we think this is the best approach. It certainly is, you know, challenging at this stage of the school year, but it is not just a decision about what has enrolled, it's all the calls and appointments that we had, you know, scheduled from that point in time of the review. It seemed like there was no better, better choice. Certainly, it also then stays well within the newly, or soon newly to be adopted classroom size limits that would be approved. Are there any questions about that particular matter? Mr. Reese?
Not really a question, other than thank you, I mean, this is what we talked about doing. But I would imagine there's still even kids registering, because based on the meeting yesterday, transportation was still getting new registrations. So I would imagine this number would have been even higher than 20, based on historic information.
That's quite possible. Any other questions on this particular item? Okay, great. Then I guess the other item, and I know Mr. Regina shared it briefly, but we had a recommendation from the high school building principal to reorganize his assistant principals to be what's called house principals. So just in summary, what that means is that each assistant principal will be responsible primarily for a grade of students, and they will be not only from the teachers, but the parents and the students associated with that, the discipline associated with that particular grade, and become, you know, highly familiar with the program services and activities associated with those particular grades. So in terms of operational effectiveness and efficiency, as well as providing our assistant principals with, you know, additional leadership opportunities and experiences, this is, and addressing some of the matters of communication and consistency with discipline. We wanted to make sure that, as Mr. Regina mentioned, that one of our assistant principals also highly attended the evening events, and we know that, as you know, it's unreasonable for us to expect someone to be there from seven to three and then also be there from five to nine or four to nine on a regular basis. So with that said, this is a recommendation that was highly reviewed by not only the building principal, the athletic director, or the assistant principal in charge of athletics and activities, but Mr. Regina, Mr. Bricker as well. We looked at a number of different solutions, but based on where we are, knowing that we've added three teachers to the budget, knowing where we are in terms of ensuring that the responsibilities are met at the high school, and knowing where we are at need for the responsibilities at evening events. We believe that these three supplemental agreements are needed in order to move forward for this school year. It would be my recommendation that I come back to you during the budgeting process later in the cycle and tell you how we're faring with that particular process, so that if this is the right direction to continue in, we'll do so or make that recommendation. If not, we'll come up with an alternative based on what we've learned this school year. Are there any questions about that particular matter? What you see there are two things, the job description and the actual creation of the supplemental agreement.
My question revolves around fulfilling those supplemental contracts. If you have 10 people interested, how are they going to be chosen?
It's, we would view them similar to the way we do coaching contracts. So they would go through an interview process that would involve the administrators involved that would include me in HR, but we would go through that process. And it's very likely that it could be the same person for multiple seasons. We would have to see what we have for applicants. Is there a specific?
I guess, is the board approving those, we approve those individuals receiving those supplemental contracts?
Absolutely.
And I only ask because there are some people who take on a lot of supplemental contracts, and I just want that opportunity for staff. I wanted the opportunity for more staff, if they're interested in doing that, to be able to be given that opportunity to do that, is I guess where my question was, and for different levels of people. A lot of times, staff in the elementary or upper elementary buildings aren't able to do some things due to their schedule, so if they're interested, that's kind of where I was going with that.
That's a fair comment, but I want the board to know that while this is available for internal candidates, we're also making this available to external candidates, and because there are a number of requirements that we not only need stuff during the evening, but there are times during the day as a job description, so details, that the assistant principal for athletics and activities will, who will be responsible for supervising this person or persons, will likely need some help from time to time. So I don't know how that will work, and is this a scheduling matter, but it should be known that it could be some people outside as well as inside the district in a combination thereof.
I'm not quite, so I'm trying to think where in the process we were with that, so I apologize.
Yeah, so it was determined from feedback that we received from Mr. Bricker and from our Dr. Speewack regarding what we pay and the number of hours associated with that. It was determined that between $8,000 and $10,000 was a proper amount based on the way we do the points process and developing these contracts. So when we looked at the level of responsibility and the fact that in some of these instances, these individuals will be the primary administrative body at events, and I just want to also, I should say this, that for high-profile events, and we know what they are, they're some of our bigger rivals and events that are likely to draw crowds, you know, our building principal, the assistant principals, myself, others will be at those events as well. So I just don't want you to think that, you know, this is the only administrative person going to be at the events. But this covers practices, this covers the events where there are instances where there'll be the only contact available. So we felt that we needed to make sure that this was a track. So we felt that we needed to make sure that this was attractive enough to get the right people who have the right level of respect and responsibility to not only be on the floor, but to have that relationship with the student body, which commonly is some of the larger challenges that are done in these supervisory capacities. Mike, did that help answer your question?
Yeah, a follow-up question that would also be that, in looking at the job description that's posted online, that there is no real mention of a time commitment. Is that something that should be added to this type of job description? I mean, are we talking two hours a day, are we talking four hours a day, how many hours a week, how many hours a month, that type of thing?
Mike, that's a good question. I mean, that's something that I think we can review. Again, it's likely going to be very similar to the way we look at our coaching contracts. So a lot of those do not necessarily have time commitments on them, although they may be embedded within those job commitments. But I think it's something that we just need to evaluate this year to make sure that we understand exactly what those commitments are going to be. We can project that right now, but I think it'd be difficult for us to determine just at this point in time.
I think the idea there is to, you know, require that the events that are scheduled, both games and practices on the home high school campus, be covered. And, you know, I know Dr. Spewack has that schedule. In fact, I think the game schedule is likely another item on the agenda for your approval, but that doesn't include your practices. So the time commitment and the individuals applying should know that. So I think you make an excellent point, Mike. We should probably include something relevant to time and the commitment so that while it might not be ours, they could look at the events that are posted and typically give them a timeframe of, you know, between three and nine, you know, three days a week aside from game schedules, they're likely to be required to be on campus. That way, they know the expectations and associated with the dollar amount. So we'll make that adjustment in the advertisement that we put out for this. Does that make sense? Mike, while you're on, do you have any other questions related to any of the two items that we just talked about, either the adding of teachers or any more on these athletic matters?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on the athletic matter, Mr. Navaret?
Yeah, am I correct in that in the spring, because Dr. Spewack coaches a baseball team, we're also contracting for athletic director services during the springs that we were doing before? Is that correct?
We did utilize services of another individual to cover the events for which he couldn't do, and this could, will potentially, or will, take care of that coverage in the spring.
Okay, can you find out what that number was? Because I think that would be good to know.
I sure can.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Can I ask, is this something we've created originally, or has this been modeled in other districts that we're kind of following success that other people have had?
Yeah, we believe that there, from the research that we've received, there are two other districts that have similar setups like this. I believe Hatfield, Hattler, Horsham, and, what's the other one? We can get you that, okay? But, and we can give you that structure as well. Any other comments on that?
My same thing was just with Mary. I just, it's just a little frustrating to know that this is being created. It's just something I just can't wrap my head around. I just think there's a responsibility for an athletic director to perform the duties that's assigned to the title. So I don't like that there's an excess of $30,000 added to the year for job responsibilities that should have been done and performed.
Yeah, I, if the perception is the way you made the statement, I would agree with you. And the problem is the perception. So maybe I can clarify by giving you, you know, some clarity around the situation. The fact of the matter is, you know, requiring someone to do the certain work during the school day and then to put in hours in the evening is likely not a long-term viable and important option. In fact, to suggest that he maybe take time off during a day so that he could not put the total number of hours in, or put, say, eight hours or 10 hours in a day, but those hours are done at night while they're standing at an athletic event. When we look at the way we compensate administrators, I can tell you right now that that's probably not the best use of those resources, to be standing at an event where if you, if Dr. Spewack was actually an athletic director, entitled such and was required to do certain responsibilities, then his presence probably should be there, and he would be paid accordingly, certainly not the same rate as we pay our assistant principals with the amount of experience that he has. So you, I agree with you. And part of what we're trying to do here is make sure that our employees have clear understandings of what their expectations are, and also make sure that we're providing the services necessary. Because I think some of the concern is when we stretch people too thin, we miss some stuff. And that's part of the dilemma here. And while I apologize for not having this before the board as part of the budgetary process, I can tell you that this is months of conversation. Just along athletics and activities, and, you know, it's, that's as much as I can say. It's been a long conversation and with a lot of people involved. And I think this is, at this point, based on everything we have, the best path forward. So I'd appreciate your support in this. And certainly, we're going to come back and say, is this working or not working? Do we need to adjust? And if so, then we're going to come up with a better plan. And there are other options. Certainly, the other options are us hire an athletic director. But I've just added three teachers, which I think is more important. And this is...
Let me just clarify then. So then, all the assistant principals that will be at the high school, including that athletic director, their salaries are similar in their scale? Or does that athletic director slash assistant principal have, has more added to it, or it never had that? Because I know his title's assistant principal slash athletic director. Am I, is that correct?
The title is assistant principal for athletics and activities.
All right.
And so, and to give you another example, if you take a look at comparisons to high schools and the number of students enrolled in a high school, and you compare us to other districts, and you say, oh, there's four assistants and a principal. And that would look like exactly what we have. And we compare ourselves to other high schools that have the same, similar enrollment, and you do, you know, a ratio, and you say, well, we're in the ballpark. But when you look at the responsibilities and the actual jobs that perform, it's important to recognize that the time on task and the type of task associated with the individuals who are, have certain titles that are supposed to be doing something. So, give you an example, if I'm coming in every day and sweeping the floors here, and I know disrespect to our custodial staff, but my rate of pay compared to the custodian rate of pay is a lot different. And if I continue to do the floor sweeping and not do the stuff that's necessary to educate the board, we would not be using my salary efficiently, or any person that would be in that position. So what we're trying to do is best align the duties with the expectation, not only for the employees themselves, but also for the district and the operation of the high school. We think that this, and, and, and make sure that we support the athletics and activities in the district. So, again, I'm not saying this is foolproof. I know that there are other examples of this. However, this is what the recommendation is at this point in time. The only other option that we think is reasonably viable would be to hire another administrator or a teacher who would be identified as, in the teacher contract, as an athletic director. And now we're talking about a lot more than $30,000. And I would just be concerned about that at this point in the game, knowing where we are staffing-wise and being able to predict that. So I hope that, hope this conversation was helpful. I know it's late in the evening. Do I know other questions? There's another one. Sorry. I just looked at the time, I did not realize, because I'm the one talking and using all this time and probably saying more than I need to. But I really want to, I really want to make sure that you have all the information.
Just, you referenced two other districts who are also using a similar model. Is that, are they also paying a similar fee for the services?
We'll look at that, yep. Any other questions?
Don't kill me, but, so we have Mr. Sergini, right? Dr. Sergini, Mr. Bontempo, Ms. Coconhour, Ms. Gravenese? Oh, that's right, okay, thank you. Because I was like, wait a minute, okay, that makes sense now, sorry. I just wanted...
I'm sorry, are there any other personnel matters on the agenda that need attention?
Just one comment, I'm disappointed to see item 10A. I think Dr. Billit served us well and had a passion for education, and it's a loss to method.
Any other personnel matters? If not, we'll move on to curriculum and programs. Dr. Katona?
Okay, the item for next week is to approve the PIAA athletic schedule for the 2019-2020 school year per policy 123.
Just a note, that attachment is likely to be updated by the end of this week. So there are some missing items there if you reviewed that. So it's my understanding that they're in the process of updating that. But I wanted to make sure you had the most recent version as part of this process for the approval of those schedules. Any other questions for Dr. Katona? If not, move on to policy. There are no first or second reading matters. Under 13 gifts, you can see that there are three gifts listed. Are there any questions about the gifts that are listed? If not, there are trips, no, I'm sorry, no trips, there are appointments of a safety and security coordinator. With the separation of employment by Dr. Sosnovick approximately a month or so ago, I left a void in the safety and security coordinator position. Please know that as a matter of Act 44-2018, we need to, as a board, appoint an individual. But please also know that you also approved as a budget item for this school year to increase our support with, I can't remember the name of the firm, but we refer to one individual as Ghouli, John Ghouli, who's been assisting us for a number of years now. And we have asked him to take on primarily most of the tasks that Dr. Sosnovick took on. However, we can't name a third party to this position, and therefore, I'm designating Mr. Regina for this position until such time we determine that there's a better administrative fit or for him to truly take on those duties if in fact, right-to-know duties are lessened or removed from him. So he is also not only a right-to-know officer, but will now be appointed as a safety and security coordinator. But primarily, my work with the building principals and Mr. Ghouli are addressing the safety matters that are coming down from the state at this time and conferring with Mr. Regina. We also then have on the agenda what we talked about before, about the professional services, and that ends the agenda action items. I'll turn that over to Ms. Arby Larsonis.
It's my turn now. All right. So then, we would have dates for board members' calendars, which I'm sure will be filled in for next week. Is there any old business or new business that anyone would like to discuss this evening?
Yes, please.
Okay, Mr. Ryan?
I just want to go back, I didn't have a chance to chime in when Mr. Booker was doing his pro forma wraparound bond issue statements. I did have one question in terms of, it looks like we'll be paying off the $35 million in these examples over the course of 15 years. Have we looked around, is that the general timeframe that school districts are using to pay off new buildings at the 15-year mark?
What it is, is we're actually using the wraparound, and we're just constantly backfilling that up. We could extend it out to any point in time, I'd be more than happy to ask around. That's what PFM, our financial advisors, has set up for us when we started this.
I ask, that is, you know, Mr. Earnshaw brought a very valid point in terms of, you know, $400,000 to $450,000 each year of new debt service that we'll have. And one way of reducing that, and we'll increase our overall cost, but one way of reducing that year to year would be to extend the life of that. And I just liken it to the idea of, you know, building a home and getting a mortgage, you know, the $35 million school building that we're paying off in 15 years when many of us pay, you know, over the course of 30 years or whatever we choose for our mortgage there. So just as an option to see what that would do for the local effort year to year, as well as what that would do to the total overall cost of the project. So if we could do a little follow-up information on that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure.
Anyone else with any old or new business? All right, at this point, I'll open up to courtesy of the floor. Dr. Malik?
Jim Malik Warset, Jim Malik Warsetter. I guess a few of these questions for KCBA, because you didn't let us ask questions. Can we ask them questions?
You can, it's courtesy of the floor, you can direct comments to me as the president.
Okay. Well, it's my understanding that at least one employee and/or their child from KCBA associates will benefit from a new Arrowhead. That's why I wanted to ask them whether that's true or not. That's number one. Number two, Mr. Kelly sent an email to Dr. Zerbi on 5/15/19 where he talked about the Act 34 hearing and noted that the, there may not be need for public comment with regards to the Act 34 hearing. So they say that we feel, they presented and asked for public comment three times before this hearing. We feel this is ample time to have public input and share the district's plans with the community. So are they planning on doing away with public comment at the Act 34 hearing? That's the other question I'd like to know. I didn't see KCBA's fee in the options, because it looked like it was all lumped in maybe with soft costs. But the email I obtained from Dr. Zerbi showed that the, back in May, they were ready to negotiating their fee with the district for a new 625-seat school at $1.809 million for their total fee. So this is, it's a done deal. It's been done since May of this past, of this year. It's going to cost $1.809 million, according to what was in the email, for the services. So, I mean, you can put percentages in there, you know, I'm better with numbers. I'd like to know what the breakdown of the $1.89 million is, or 809 million is. So it would be helpful if we had question and answers with the architect to talk about things like the comprehensive approach you guys aren't taking. Only person up there thinking about a comprehensive approach is Mr. Earnshaw. You guys figure, once you made a decision, that's it. You can't change your mind, you can't look at any new information and data. And I'll put it in terms of what I understand is a doctor. That's like me making the diagnosis of appendicitis and saying, you're going to go to surgery on Monday, and then they get better, but I still take them to surgery because I decided to take them to surgery. That's how, that's how you guys are acting upfront. You can't look at any new facts, any new data, because you've made your mind up already. And it's wrong, as Mr. Earnshaw pointed out. Ms. Larsonis, you can't do two things at once. You can't think of the K-4, or Arrowhead building and Arcola at the same time. Jen Kangaroo said that, don't worry about Arcola, we'll fill it up. Where does that come from? We'll fill it up. You know, I like numbers and statistics and everything else. You've got Mr. Navaret, who's all upset with Mr. Earnshaw because he has to keep a campaign... a campaign promise. And then we have the, you know, the person who loves public education, who's getting the best deal in the district, getting, you know, one student, $23,000 cost a district, and he's paying $6,000 in property taxes. Of course, he likes public education, and, you know, why worry about these numbers?
Thank you, Dr. Malik. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Mr. Andrews.
I continue to think that Arrowhead Forward is a sham the way it's being conducted. Survey results show lots of residents also disagreed or strongly disagreed with the recommendation. Let me list a myriad of problems. M&amp;M's 2017 recommendation for two closures was ignored. M&amp;M's projections use predicted birth rates, and they are higher than actuals by about 50 per year, a huge 20% error. A new and credible enrollment projection is essential and can now use facts about two projects now underway for 390 homes. There's no correct classroom utilization study, especially for Arkola. Many rooms are underused. Arkola utilization is at 58%, and it can again hold grades six, seven, and eight. January's options C and F had wrong functional capacities, and my corrections have been ignored. I claim 409 empty seats in '27-'28 with a high enrollment projection for existing space without Arrowhead in a K-5 and six-to-eight grade structure. I have data that shows that Skyview as a five-to-six is the main cause of our high school PA rank drop from 11 to 59 in recent years. K-5 is most popular and gets high rankings. It's better for the students than K-4 or K-3. KCBA clearly stated that Arrowhead renovation is a poor choice. Methacton has other renovation to do and more borrowing to pay for it within the index. The upcoming MEA negotiation will strain meeting the index by itself. Methacton already spends beyond the norm on debt payments for buildings. Methacton has failed to present... Methacton has failed to present a workable financing plan for either Arrowhead concept that meets rules such as spending borrowed money within three years. As for full-day kindergarten, it hurts more students than it helps. I have data to show that. It's unaffordable, Dr. Zerbi, and would require more teachers, classrooms, and taxes. That's 14 problems. Skyview 1 was a bad decision at a bad time. I was there and opposed. Let's not repeat that at Skyview 2. So as fiduciaries, be responsible, not foolhardy, just in hopes of votes this fall. There is no need to rush, delay the August vote, or cancel it. Direct the administration to develop a responsible and comprehensive plan without Arrowhead and then evaluate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Mr. Vickelman?
Thank Brian Earnshaw for his comments and his logical questions that never get answered, but with generalities and cliches. That's how your pinpoint questioning always gets answered, and you never get the data he asked for. February 22, 2017, Audubon Elementary was closed based on a two-year study of enrollment trends by Malone &amp; McBroom, a New England company that we paid $60,000 to that had their finger on the pulse of construction projects in this area and the enrollment and birth rate of this area. February 22, 17, Audubon is closed based on the enrollments going down, okay? Now, Malone &amp; McBroom, the same company, in a very short period from that February 17, the enrollment is going up, okay? And now we're building a 20, if a Davy said it was 22 million, but it's $35 million school, okay? So you have to picture that. February 17, we're closing Audubon of 2017, right? Malone &amp; McBroom, the same company, in a short span, a year, year and a half, the enrollment's going up. This New England firm projected enrollment's going up. So maybe Malone was in charge of enrollment going down to get the decision that you wanted, and McBroom is in charge of the enrollment going up to get the decision that you want. But it's the same company. In a very short time, you've got this, okay? We built Skyview based on enrollment going to 6,500 kids. We have 4,800 kids. Arkola had 1,500 kids in it in 2006 before Skyview. It barely has 870 now. Skyview was built with a capacity of 950. There's probably 150 seats there, okay? You need to use that space. Save yourself some money. Save $35 million or whatever. And the renovations were $12 million from 2016. Renovations came up to $28 million, so it's a no-brainer to decide to rebuild. So I just think you could save a lot of money by, I think you should reopen Arrowhead based on Malone &amp; McBroom's decision that enrollment's going up. You should open, I mean, you should open Audubon. I hear about classes being crowded, so if they said enrollment's going down and you closed Audubon, now they're saying enrollment's going up. So reopen Audubon and free up the space. Spend your $10 million to renovate it. It was renovated in 1990. So it doesn't need that much. $10 million, I think the number was? So I just think you need to think about that, how quickly it went down and how quickly it went up. You know, and that expert company from New England that knew our business here, that's where it came from. That's where your decision's coming from. But Brian Earnshaw, you're always right on. You ask all the right questions, and you get cliches, and you get generalities. I don't think you should pay anybody $30,000 for attending events. They took the job in the district to attend athletic events. They knew what they were getting into. Best job in the district? Athletic director. Worst job in the district? Director of transportation, okay? So he doesn't need another $30,000, believe me. Shay Regina gets appointed safety director. He didn't know he was going to take that when he took the job. He should get $30,000. That's a big job, big responsibility. He should get more money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vickelman. Anyone else with courtesy of the floor? Dr. Zavertnik.
Jen Zavertnik, Lower Providence Township. I just wanted to publicly thank Dr. Zerbi and hope that you guys vote on 10C, the establishment of these three positions. I know I was pretty vocal and passionate about it, but I think having 20 kids being displaced is astronomical. I don't like that four are being displaced this year. I still think that's four too many. I work for a local district that they, when the numbers get too high, they just hire like this. They don't displace any of their children. So I'm very, very glad that the number has gone from 20 to four, although I would still like it to be zero. So I just wanted to thank you and hope that you vote on that. In regards to, I hear you guys saying, like, we don't need a Taj Mahal. I don't feel like that design that was presented today, I think it's wonderful and I love so much about it. I love that there's SGI rooms. I love that there's flexibility. I don't think it's the Taj Mahal. I work in some of those buildings that you saw on our tour. They are the Taj Mahal, and I think they're too big. I don't think what was shown here was that. I do think that you should consider the 625. A little frustrated because I feel like we closed an elementary school because enrollment was going down, and now I feel like all tonight I kept hearing, we got more, we have more, we have more. Like a French teacher had to be moved because there is more at Arkola. So I think that you should consider the bigger to have room to grow. If there's an overabundance at Woodland or Warseth, maybe they could come here. I'm not all about redistricting, but if you have an opportunity to build a school, I wouldn't do the 525. If you are over in other buildings, this could be an opportunity to take them here and not maybe have to keep building four classrooms and four classrooms on in the future at different schools. So please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with courtesy of the floor? Okay, motion to adjourn? Okay, there we go. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.